Good evening. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for January eighth, two thousand and eighteen to order. Would you please rise and join me for the Fledge of Allegiance?
Happy立正. In the United States of America, in this great public, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up tonight is a joint, it's a public hearing with the capital outlay, for the capital outlay plan, joint meeting with the Finance Committee and Capital Outlay Committee. Will you read the legal notice?
I will. Pursuant to Chapter nine, Section seven of the Harwich Home Room Charter, the Finance Committee will hold a public hearing at a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the Capital Outlay Committee on Monday, November eighth, two thousand and eighteen, no earlier than six P.M. in the Dean R. Griffin Room, Harwich Town Hall, seven thirty-two Main Street, Harwich, for the purpose of reviewing the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, twenty, twenty-five, Harwich Seven Year Capital Outlay Plan. Capitals of the plan are available on the town website and the town administrator's office in Town Hall during regular business hours. All members of the public having interest in this topic are cordially invited to attend.
Thank you. Public hearing is open. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I probably should just have the record reflect that when the majority of the Finance Committee comes, we may want to pause and just convene the Finance Committee. Just give me a heads up when people are here and I'll leave my comments. Mr. Chairman, just to go through, I guess since this is a formal public hearing, I probably should kind of emphasize what has been emphasized in the past and walk through, so that's my intent. The document this evening, I did include some changes that were made at the end of November, so I will highlight some of those changes since some of these things the community has heard and a few of them are newer items. With that, I am going to proceed alphabetically. These are, the recommendations that I make are recommendations that either I'll point out are administrative recommendations or the Capital Outlay Committee recommendations, and the vice chair of the Capital Outlay is here this evening, so if I misspeak, welcome to ask me to correct it. So with that as a overview, under administration, and I should probably say too that I will focus on the nineteen requests and the requests from twenty and out years, obviously are in the plan and people can look at that, but the focal point of my presentation will be FY nineteen. So under administration, there are two requests, primarily Albro House Status Assessment. This has also been submitted to CPC, so I should probably say too that CPC is meeting on this Thursday night in which they will make their recommendations, my understanding, in terms of the applications that are before them. Under the charter, it calls for the capital plan to include all requests for capital items, so that's why CPC is included within this document, as I have been advised by the town attorney. So twenty-five hundred dollars first from CPC for an assessment of Albro House. The second request is a walkway reconstruction, basically sidewalk reconstruction, from Sacotucket Harbor to Harwich Port. This is something that the town would initiate and fund. It is a state roadway, so the state would have to kind of oversee the work and oversee the contractor to do the work, but this would be an initiative to connect the improvements that are being made to the harbor with Harwich Port, so that is two hundred and fifty thousand. That is recommended to be funded under free cash. The next one is cemetery, the Mount Pleasant Cemetery Gravestone Conservation. This would be a CPC application under the Historic Column for forty-seven thousand dollars for renovations to gravestones. The pet crematory is four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, and they have a second part to that, which is the actual cremation device, which is ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty. So those two items are requests. These would be included as part of the General Fund with the idea that revenues from cemetery, additional revenues from this service would be generated and segmented off in the General Fund and identified to offset the debt service related to the installation of that project. Under the Community Center, within their operating budget, they are looking for computer replacements for the entire building to try to bring the entire building up to date with some of their computer hardware, that's fifteen thousand, six hundred. That would be included as capital within the operating budget. On the Community Center, the basement construction of public records storage, this is also a CPC application. The amount is sixty-two thousand, twenty-eight dollars. This would be for the creation of space in the basement. That would be environment controlled, so that way as documents are reviewed and gone through at Town Hall, they can be vetted. We don't need to have three or four duplicates, and there are some records that are eligible for destruction, so under a different article, we would have those be reduced, and then the final information for the items that have to be retained for historic purposes would be located in this public records storage area, which currently does not exist in the basement of the Community Center. Under conservation, the preservation of the Judah Eldridge property, the total request for that is three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. This is to have property that has been identified as important conservation property up off of the roads from the Hawksnax, Seths Withfield, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And out of that, three hundred and sixty-nine, the request is for three hundred and nineteen thousand to come from CPC, Open Space, and fifty thousand to come from free cash. Similar vein, the Cornelius Pond Property, also known as the Eldridge Property, would be a conservation restriction. This is property that has been obtained or within the control of the Harwich Conservation Trust. This specifically would be just for the conservation restriction, the value of the conservation restriction. We did get an appraisal back on this, just as an update to information. The appraisal came in well in excess of the negotiated amount. The negotiated amount with HCT is two hundred thousand, and to fund that two hundred thousand, it would be twenty-five thousand from Open Space and then a hundred and seventy-five thousand from undesignated funds. That appraisal actually came back close to six hundred thousand, just for those that may be interested. Under engineering, within their operating budget, there's a federal guideline called MS four, municipal surface drainage. There are some drainage structures that require, that take storm water from the street that goes directly into a wetlands that needs to be controlled, and that, this is a plan to assist us doing that. Once that plan is done over the next couple of years, there will be implementation that would be needed. I guess the good news is not every single catch basin leads directly into a wetlands, so we are not having to do every single catch basin in town, or that would be a dramatically increased cost. Under the next one in engineering, the Pleasant Lake Avenue Crossing Lights, these are the warning lights for pedestrians and for bicyclists as they cross some of our major roads in the community. That number is twenty-seven thousand dollars. That is a CPC, undesignated slash recreation request. Under DPW, specifically Facility Maintenance, there are four items that are included in this. The first one is the library preservation, the, I'm sorry, the update and replace the town's energy management system for all facilities throughout the community. It's a hundred and forty thousand. That is being recommended to be funded from free cash. The next item is library preservation to continue and finish hopefully the exterior painting project of the building, so this would be a supplemental appropriation. Previous appropriation was made, that combined with this, administration believes would be sufficient to be able to get the work accomplished on that building. That is three hundred thousand dollars, and that would come from CPC Historic. Carpet for the Community Center and Town Hall, in order to try to get economies of scale to group those two projects together, so we have it under the auspice of carpet. That's a hundred and thirty thousand. That would be funded out of free cash according to this plan. And then Albro and Brooks Academy Boilers would be funded from free cash, and the amount is forty thousand dollars. Just, I don't know if I said this earlier or not, but under the purview of the charter, it's the expectation of the Capital Outlay Committee to make recommendations on all items fifty thousand dollars and above, so when I make a comment about fifty thousand dollars and below, those are specifically administration comments and not necessarily those of the Capital Outlay Committee. I did highlight on the Fire Department, and we do have some fire representatives here tonight, I did receive requests to make a few changes to this, so just for planning purposes, I've made those changes, and I just want to kind of at least point those out. I think if Capital Outlay wants to have a subsequent discussion, we should definitely do so, but in terms of the police and fire radio, this was to have a secondary system for police and fire radios in case we lose the primary system. That was a million dollars over five years. We have revised that in this plan. It doesn't start until FY twenty, but I just want to highlight it since it was a change that has recently come to our attention, that it would be two hundred and fifty thousand over four years, so the amount is still the same, but just over a shorter period of time.
Chris, could you give Jack a second to call his meeting to order?
Mr. Chairman, Finance Committee has a quorum. I will call a meeting to order accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the, the next item would be the, on the townwide radio system, this is other non-public safety departments, it's a hundred thousand. That is slated to be funded from free cash. And then we do have, this is where there was a change in which we have, on the air pack replacement, we had that in FY nineteen. We have got updated information from the grant agencies that that will not be something that they would fund FY nineteen, so it doesn't make sense to put it in if we have a reason to believe that it's not going to be funded, so that has been shifted out to FY twenty. What we do have reason to believe will be funded is a nozzle and valve replacement program. This is to replace the nozzles and valves that are on the individualized equipment in the department to have it be uniform throughout, and we have reason, good reason to believe that this grant will receive more favorable consideration than the other one. In terms of the nuts and bolts, it actually, from a finance perspective, it's a little bit less of a total request. It's seventy-five thousand dollars with five thousand coming from a town matching fund, so our match would be three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, and then we anticipate, hopefully if the grant is awarded, seventy-one thousand, two hundred and fifty. If there are questions in regards to that, we do have representatives from the Fire Department here to respond to those specifics. I already alluded to the air pack replacement. On the ambulance replacement program, three hundred and forty thousand. This puts us on our traditional cycle of every other year replacing an ambulance, so it's three hundred and forty thousand to be funded from free cash. I did also make a notation after some consideration. The chief took a look at some of the equipment and has decided that the ladder truck replacement, which had been slated for FY twenty-two, because of a kind of recent assessment, we believe that that will last until two thousand and twenty-four, so that has been shifted back two years in the, in the plan. And then the, the last item is the Station Two Building Upgrade. This would be a debt exclusion, and the number, more for rounding purposes here, is six million, fifty thousand dollars is the estimated amount. In terms of, the next area is on golf. Golf, there is landscape reclamation and major tree removal for thirty-five thousand dollars. This is all funded from golf fees, so it basically is within the General Fund and its fees are generated from golf operations. The second one in golf is landscape and hardscape and operational safety projects and traffic configuration. This is basically almost a supplement if needed for the current project that was presented to Planning Board, or will be presented to Planning Board, for the landscape layouts for the new configuration of the parking lot with, and taking into account the new cart barn that has been approved this past year. On the next item related to golf, build new cart part, new cart path at Hole Twelve for nineteen, and then they have subsequent, that is twenty-four thousand dollars, again funded from golf fees. Under the Harbor Masters operation, a supplemental Sacotucket landside renovation and improvements, we do have a reauthorization of ninety thousand dollars. That administration will seek to help fund that three million dollar project. The next one under this is actually a grant application for CPC to fund two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for ADA improvements. So that is two hundred and fifty thousand. I do have notes on here that there is a, so there's a CPC application, there's an ADA grant application with the state, both of those identified at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then a Seaport grant request, that would be a million dollars, all related to the same project, the landside improvements. I've already alluded to the library requests. They do have, obviously I've alluded to the supplemental library exterior preservation. They do also have a CPC request in, for ten thousand, three hundred and forty dollars for the preservation and digitization of the Harwich Oracle Newspaper, so that is a CPC request that is under consideration. Under natural resources, the Hinckley's Pond Restoration and Public Access Area, this is actually broken into two pieces. The first piece is six hundred thousand dollars. That would cover the alum treatment to the pond that would help to clean up the pond. The pond had a fish kill this past summer, so it is something that is needing of attention. Also, it is part of our comprehensive wastewater management plan. The funding request for this is four hundred and fifty thousand from CPC, Open Space, that's obviously subject to their vote, and then a hundred and fifty thousand from free cash. And then the second component at the request to CPC was to try to do a better job at the public access, so it would be to put a shelter up for bikes, that would be about seventy-five thousand dollars, as well as to do a overlook to the pond, as well as a stairway down to the pond itself. The elevation there requires a staircase in order to make that transition a little bit easier. The next item is under planning. This was an adjustment based upon some updated financial numbers. The Housing Trust and Part-Time Housing Coordinator, we look forward three hundred thousand for the trust, in order for the trust, once it's formed, to be able to have some money to be able to accomplish some of the missions of the trust, and then forty thousand dollars towards a part-time coordinator. Hopefully we just do that regionally is still the thought process at this point. The original request was five hundred thousand. The Police Department has for FY nineteen, the beginnings of a TASER replacement program, so the combination of this is in excess of fifty thousand, so the Capital Outlay Committee did vote on, in favor of this, but it is a three years to pay for a five-year program to replace with the first year payment of thirty-six thousand dollars. Under the Public Works, the Five-Year Road Maintenance Plan, which I believe we do have in the book, and I think Mr. Hooper has it also in file down at the DPW, it does cover five-year road maintenance. The amount for FY nineteen is one hundred, one point four million dollars, and seven hundred thousand would be done in the form of a debt exclusion. Seven hundred thousand would be funded out of Chapter ninety, which is kind of a consistent number that we received. There is a notation on here as well that a hundred thousand of that would be for design, a hundred thousand towards the Route twenty-eight West Harwich Design to kind of match up to the work that the Town of Dennis has, has been doing over there. The debt exclusion request for a lower county road has been deferred, has been moved out from nineteen to twenty, primarily to allow the Water Department to be able to get in and do some work prior to the road being repaired. Public Works has four vehicles that they have sought, a Ford F-350 dump truck for cemetery, a Ford F-250 for highway, the first one at eighty thousand, the second one is fifty-five thousand, and then another Ford 350 for parks at eighty thousand. Those three requests are contemplated to be funded from free cash. The Johnson sweeper body, just the body, not the entire unit, the sweeper itself, is slated for a hundred and twenty-five. That is not recommended to be funded out of the, we just don't have existing funds available to cover that. Under Rec and Youth, they have three requests in for two thousand and eighteen for transit passenger wagon due to the success of their programs. They have a need for additional transportation capacity, plus one of their vans is becoming more and more out of, out of getting out of commission, so that's thirty-five thousand. And then Bang Street Parking Lot, Pavement and Overlay, this is a similar project to what we just did at Red River Beach, but down at Bang Street, that is eighty thousand, and that is contemplated to be funded from free cash. On the Brooks Park Phase Five Comprehensive Lighting Plan, this is a request to CPC, undesignated. That is three hundred and thirty-three, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred dollars for that project. On the Town Clerk, as I alluded to earlier, on the records retention, there is a request for forty thousand dollars from CPC for the culling of the records, making sure that we destroy what needs to be destroyed and retain what needs to be retained, and then we do have in here, sort of a notation, that we have identified about forty thousand dollars that we put aside as encumbrance to start doing that work this year, this current fiscal year. On the wastewater project, the wastewater has really three components to it, two very large ones. The first is the tying cost of pipes and pump station to the Town of Chatham, that would be a debt exclusion. Two million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the slated amount for that. We do have some implementation services, twenty thousand dollars, that is included within the operating budget to continue some of the efforts that we've been making with the towns of Dennis and Yarmouth, as well as other activities. And then the Pleasant Bay South Watershed Collection System, last year there was an appropriation made to do the design and to sign up with the IMA for, with the Town of Chatham to utilize their treatment facility, and this twenty, twenty million, two hundred and eighty thousand would cover the cost for the installation of pipes. Right now, it's slated for approximately six hundred homes would, would be hooked up in this phase. On the Water Department, they did have a couple changes in this, more so just where the funding sources are coming from. Previously, we've just showed Water Enterprise, and to try to be a little bit more specific, we are putting in more specific the funding source. So the Lower County Road Project, the water line services I alluded to earlier, we'd like to be able to get the water work done and make sure that we let the road to be redone without having to, hopefully without having to do additional water work. That would actually come, that one million, eighteen thousand, seven hundred would come from water retained earnings, so that would come from retained earnings, similar to our free cash. And then they have two other projects, a, have two thousand and eighteen Ford Super Duty three fifty with box, two units in two thousand and nineteen, so that'd be a hundred and ten thousand dollars from water revenue, so built into their budget, and Wells and Pump Access Asphalt Management Plan, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. These are just to improve the roadway accesses into the wells and pump stations. I know last time I did this presentation, someone had asked, what were the three numbers below, so these are not necessarily town projects, but they are applications that have been put forth to the CPC. So the Community Development Partnership requested ten thousand dollars. The Habitat of Cape Cod for the project at ninety-three to ninety-seven Main Street, six homes at a fifty thousand dollar each subsidy, so they have a request in for three hundred thousand, so that is also in here. And then the Harwich Housing Authority has requested four hundred thousand for the buy-down program. I have at least here for budgeting purposes to see what fits within the budgeted amounts available to the town and to the CPC. I did recommend the ten thousand, I recommended the three hundred thousand. The four hundred thousand, I recommend a hundred and thirty-five, just based upon the fact that previous funds have been given and have not been spent in a timely fashion, so the hundred and thirty-five would allow for a project a year to be reviewed. Just some of the raw totals, just to kind of go through, the total recommended amount for funding is thirty-six million, three hundred and fifty-three thousand. Debt exclusion, twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty thousand, twenty-nine million, one hundred and eighty thousand. Debt exclusion, that is most of the, the water, I'm sorry, the wastewater and the project at the, the fire station. Free cash utilization would be one point five, six, nine. I'm just going to pick some of these bigger ones. The Community Preservation Funds, two point six million dollars is slated. The cemetery revenue, new revenue from General Fund and the new fee would be five hundred and seventy-seven is what's contemplated in here. That would be a debt service. And then the Water Enterprise retained earnings would be the one million, eighteen thousand, and Water Enterprise accounts, revenue, two hundred and eighty-five. And just, I do have some charts on here that kind of show, but just to walk over a little bit, the available free cash right now is three point five, seven, six million, so you can see the one point five is being used for the capital. There is approximately over a million dollars that is going towards, actually over one hundred and five million, that is going for snow and ice, OPEB funding and stabilization funding. So we have a comparable, a comparable amount going to reserves or one-time expenditures. On the Community Preservation, there is currently available, and this number was updated as of December thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen, three point one million dollars that is available for the CPC to, to available for appropriation. Their request totaled three point five million dollars, so they have a more requests than they have funding. Under the funding plan that I had suggested when I read through this column, it totals out about a million dollars in undesignated, three hundred and forty-four thousand in Open Space, four hundred and sixty-one in Historic, and Housing, seven hundred and eighty-five for a grand total of two point six, five, one. And just on Housing, Housing for the last four years has basically built up, so that's why that number, seven hundred and eighty-five in that box, actually in the box available is, is one point two million dollars in, in Housing, I'm sorry, seven hundred and eighty-six thousand in Housing available. The request is one point two million dollars.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Open it up to questions from the public on the capital plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is that on? My comments this evening are not so much going down line item through line item as the administrator has just done, and certainly to have any comments on specific items on the capital plan. However, my comments this evening are to be based on that I, I would respectfully ask that you people change the name from capital plan to capital budget. We have, we have left the idea of capital planning, and for those of you that don't know, I served on the Capital Outlay Plan when it was originally formulated in this town, and I served on that for, I believe, six years. At that time, we had what I considered a true capital plan. The purpose of the capital plan was to make sure that our department heads and the town thought forward enough, five years, so that we could plan out capital expenditures so that the taxpayer would not be hit with a bunch of projects in one year unnecessarily and unexpectedly. When I served on the Capital Outlay Committee, we passed a plan, similar to which I're doing this evening, and we brought it to town meeting, and the only thing that was added by a simple majority- majority vote on town meeting floor was the sixth year, or the new added year to the five-year plan. If anyone wanted to change the plan in the previous five years by adding a new project, it required a two-thirds vote of town meeting, something that we all know is not that easy to get. However, it's easy enough to get if, in fact, a project was worthy of it. Quite frankly, I think that this exercise that you've all wasted a great deal of time on, and by the way, I thank you all for it, you are still putting together an excellent document, but it is, in fact, a capital budget. It's a capital budget. And what, why am I kind of a little taken back by it? Because quite frankly, we have, in just these recent years, seen by not having a really strict, hard-to-change capital plan, what happens is, projects jump on the plan. And they jump on the plan prematurely, they jump on the plan not ready to really go forward, yet because a simple majority of the people at town meeting, who with all due respect, many of them don't take the time to really understand what the capital plan is about, but they may fill the room with people that are interested in that project. We are going to be talking later on about the harbor project. By the way, I think that's been deplorable, absolute deplorable expense of taxpayers' money. Because once again, as I argued on town meeting floor, those projects jumped the plan and got into the plan because of how you people, you, the selectmen, the finance committee, and the people who run our town today, operate the capital budget. You're kidding yourselves when you call it a capital plan. It's not a capital plan. I would like to encourage any members of the finance committee, all the board of selectmen, to sit down with members of the public and maybe consider going back to the old way we used to do business. Because that is truly what capital planning is about. What we're doing here today is capital budgeting. Simple as that. And again, I will not pick apart nor tear apart any specific line item or area of it, because quite frankly, it's just what it is. It's a capital budget. You people change it every year, you bring it to town meeting, town meeting votes a new one every year. It means nothing, and it's not protecting my tax rate at all. It does not encourage our department heads to do planning, to really look at their needs for the next five years, and to really sit down and buckle down and make sure that as they bring forward these capital expenditures, that they are done timely so that they have as minimal impact to the tax rate as possible. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hey, my name's Matt Byron. I live at twenty-five Colonial Way, which is right on the corner of twenty-eight and Colonial Way by Brax. So I had a question about the sidewalks, two questions actually. First is, looks like two hundred and fifty thousand is allocated. First question is whether we're comfortable that that's enough, and if not, what are we going to do? And second, so I guess I'm a little bit concerned that it's not as much of a priority. I've heard some things like the parking lot at Bang Street's going to be taken out of the cash, available cash. I guess I just wanted to hear whether this was a main priority for both groups, and whether we've, you know, started talks with the state and where that process will be. So a little information on that would be helpful.
Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, I guess I would like to have a chance too to comment on Leo's comments, just to, nothing really negative necessarily. Just on the sidewalk project, we did have, I had discussions directly with our DPW, so I did get that number based upon a lineal foot for the sidewalk costs from the distance, I can't remember exactly, but thirty-three hundred feet comes to mind. So we have a kind of per-unit cost. It's not our, it's not the town of Harwich's property, so we would have to petition the state. We have made a effort to reach out to the state and met, had mentioned to our state representative delegation, as well as professionals within the Mass Highway, Mass DOT now they call themselves, to explore the discussion about the way their project or their process works, is because it's their state roadway. They have vendors that are on, on their bid list, if you would, so that if we wanted to have this project jumped up, we do have a letter, a commitment from the state that they will do it. The thing the letter doesn't say is when, so it could be two years, it could be twenty years, quite honestly. And I have received some input from residents in that area that have asked for a better sidewalk network. And it's not just for handicap folks, but it's really for people with baby carriages and things of that nature. So the estimate, the two hundred and fifty thousand comes from my DPW for per-unit cost, so if you take the lineal feet and the distance. And then secondly, we will petition the state. If the state says, okay, if the town has the money, we will engage the, they do the design work on their own, and then they would take a bidder or a vendor that they have on their bid list to actually then do the work. So with us funding the money, it makes that project go from a potential to more of a reality.
So what is a priority? The concern?
The concern for me, and I think I'm similarly, or specifically situated to answer this, we see the foot traffic, because we're right on the corner there, right by Brax, and there are people going all summer, constantly, from morning till night, including during the dark. And I've walked that path a couple times, and it's, it's really dangerous. So I just, I know all the work that's going on at Seco Tucket, and ten million dollars or so is being spent. I just think if we don't get that done, or we don't focus on it, it'll be irresponsible. Just with that.
And just to be very fair, administration, I actually put that in as a request of administration. Capital Outlay did vote in favor of that project. In fairness, this is really one of the first presentations to the finance committee and to the board of selectmen, so they'll have their chance as the cycle goes through to weigh in as to what they think. I don't think the board has officially voted. They've been supportive of what's been submitted, but they have not officially voted. So I don't want to, I don't want to characterize things any other than, at this stage in the process, it's really administration and capital outlay presenting to the, to the two boards. And just to Leo's comments earlier, you know, I, I understand, and maybe it's a little bit of administration, that the focal point is to make sure that I have the budget balance for FY nineteen. But I think the capital outlay, and certainly the department heads, I think I alluded to the fire department, looking at how do you, you know, lay things out and time it a little bit more. So I, I think that there is a greater level of sensitivity to the timing on these requests and how we do the requests. So at least from a debt management plan, which isn't really part of this capital planning process, but it is part of the overall budgeting that we do, as debt falls off, we try to bring debt on to try to be responsive to the, to the taxpayers. I think that that works very well when you have a limited amount. Quite honestly, with the tech school and with the sewer project coming in, these are very big dollars coming into a cycle and into a process. So if you do look at the plan, we do have, FY nineteen has thirty-six million, almost forty million dollars in requests. Twenty has nine million dollars. Twenty-one has four and a half. Twenty-two has twelve million. And then twenty-three has six million. Twenty-four has eighteen point five million. And then twenty-five has three million. So I think that we are trying to build a culture here of having people try to lay out and plan things. And there's probably no one more frustrated than I am, Leo, and quite honestly, I've lost some, some night's sleep about, because the economy is heating up and the budgets for some of these projects haven't been able to hold because the builders are busy. And we're, we're in the same competition for those builders as the private sector. And we have gotten caught on a few of these projects. And I think that's more a byproduct of the economy than it is specifically bad planning by the, by the town. But I know some of our numbers haven't held, and I know in some cases contractors that don't hold their numbers, or engineers we use that don't hold their numbers, we don't invite them back. So we do what we can to try to get good numbers from a town perspective.
Thank you, Chris. Was your question answered? Thank you. Any other questions? Entertained a motion to close the public hearing?
Someone.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Onto board discussion. Jack, I'll start with you, your finance committee.
Dana, would you like to start?
Sure, someone's got to go first.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
You want to be the latest guy.
Right, right. Sorry about that, but humans, you know. The finance committee's point of view, we're going to take our votes a little bit later. I think one of the discussions we had was about making sure that there are bid prices on the bigger items, like the fire station, so we don't get caught up in what happened with the waterfront, the water side of that project. We want to make sure that town meeting votes on something specific. And I think I've talked to both the finance committee and to you about just, it's your plan eventually here, you're going to submit what goes in the warrant, and it's up to you to decide whether it's cleaner as what Leo is talking about. I don't think there needs to be a major change in the name of it or any of that stuff. I think that once you take a hold of it and make your final disposition on it, you can go a long ways in deciding how it appears and how we vote it. And I think removing some of the fifty thousand dollar less items, cleaning it up some, making it easier to read, would go a long ways towards that. And getting back into the habit of looking at last year's before we vote this year's. We have a great, again, this is a great working document. It helps us a lot to make good decisions for the town. But when it comes time to presenting it and voting it as a plan, a no-charge article that just lays out a map for the future, that's going to be in your hands, and I think you can do a lot to make that appearance better for the voters of Harwich.
Thank you, Dana. Mark?
Nothing at this point.
Ed? John?
Just one clarification on the sidewalk question again. That's, that's for design and construction, right?
Yeah, actually, the way the state DOT does it is they do their own internal design, so they would design it on their own, and then we would pay for the construction. So this would be specifically for construction dollars.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
I have a few questions and observations. We've now got OPEB in here at two fifty, and stabilization eight hundred. I guess I'm looking for a gambling number on, what are the odds that we're going to be remaining right around those levels in your point of view right now? Because that's a good number for us.
Yeah, I, I think that that's a, I kind of chuckled, because last year, it was more of a, or a year before, it was a product of, I did bad authorship in one of the articles. So the plan was to put more money into OPEB, and because I didn't word the article right, we had to put it all into stabilization. So I think when we went into that, we went in about one point seven million, two years, maybe it was two years ago, and we spent that, we did do the full amount. I had it in two categories, we ended up having to do one because of the defect in the article. I think, you know, if the, if the plan is adhered to, I don't see any reason why this can't be complied with, and that those numbers would go in to continue to build. I think the stabilization fund is about two point eight million dollars now, if I remember right. OPEB is close to, close to nine hundred thousand. One thing on OPEB, we do have in the operating budget, a hundred thousand dollars a year is going into that from health insurance, so we are always funding that. This year, I'm actually going to propose that we go up to three hundred thousand as part of the operating budget. What this really does is if we have above and beyond the ability to do a one-time payment, can we do that? And that's what this does. So you would take the three hundred thousand in the operating budget, plus the two hundred and fifty, so we would then have five hundred and fifty thousand going into OPEB for this year. So I think that we should plan when we have those one-time monies, that we want to put it, put away for the rainy day, or put towards those obligations. We have a vehicle to accomplish that, and that's what this does.
On the page with Public Works, page three, we're budgeting one point four million in nineteen, one point four in twenty, so on, one point four in twenty-three, and, okay. I guess if there's ever a time where we start to wonder about inflation, we're probably getting close to it. So I would, you know, think that we might be a little optimistic on the inflation front. And of course, as we know right now, labor's going up through the roof on projects, so I'm not too sure, but that we might want to take another look at that at some point. It's unlikely that they're all going to stay the same for seven years, six years. Okay?
Yeah, just to, to that point, I appreciate the opportunity. You're absolutely right that, I think what this was based upon originally was Mr. Hooper had received some information that in order to keep the town's roads up, we need to spend about one point four million dollars. That information now is, well, I've been here at least four years, so it's getting to be a dated number that we're using, to your, to your exact point. So this year, we have engaged the services, I can't remember the name of the company, but a company to come in, and they've actually driven all the roads in the community and have done an assessment. And what they'll do is they'll take some of the labor costs, they'll take some of the materials costs, and they'll start to generate a quality of each of the roads. So we will actually be able to get kind of an updated number for what that should be going forward. And I think that their software does include a inflation factor in there, so we should be able to have that graduate over time. Just one thing, labor costs do go up. It is kind of interesting, when we did the Red River Beach pavement costs, actually went down. So we were paying about ninety-eight dollars a ton, and we were paying seventy-eight dollars a ton. Those, as gas prices go down, which are unfortunately on their way back, headed up, but sometimes those material costs go up and down and fluctuate.
Maintenance, funding, and sourcing is one of my worries, and I'll wonder where we stand on that topic right now.
In terms of facility maintenance?
Yeah.
I kind of rely upon, you know, the facility maintenance director, Sean Libby, to say what he thinks is prioritization, and really leave it to him. He has been kind of working on going through and doing an assessment in terms of each building. So, but I think we probably could do a little bit more of a comprehensive plan. The one, the one real issue, you know, people think sometimes, oh, you're a big government, you have sixty million plus. We have one guy that, that does facility maintenance, and he's a working foreman.
Yep.
So we, we need to find a way to get a little bit more resources for him, so he can put more time into planning and not less time into kind of emergency reactions.
The other thing, based on things I've heard and read, is that there's a lot of CPC projects at this point, they're not quite clear whether they're going to approved or not. And where will that money come from if they don't get approved by CPC?
It's a good question. You know, quite honestly, the, for me to balance the budget, I have less money than CPC has to dedicate to four different areas. And I have to find a way to, to spread it out and address all the needs of the community. So I would implore, as I have been trying to implore for the last six months for CPC, that if it's a project, but it's not perfect, but it's a project that you can help us move forward with it, these projects are real and need to be done. To your specific question, I mean, if they don't fund, a perfect example of this is Hinckley's Pond. We've had two fish kills, one as recently as this past year. It's not getting better. We have a legal obligation under the CWMP to do the work. If they don't fund it, most likely, you know, I will be back to the board and say, let's put it on the debt exclusion, because the work has to get done. And it will be my third time going back. So we have tried each time to, to get it.
So situation's still a little unstable?
They're meeting on Thursday night, so just for folks at home that, you know, have heard some of these requests and have an interest, I think, you know, that they should hear from the community that these, some of these projects are very important and need to be funded.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Michael. You're welcome. Larry?
Thank you, Michael. I have some comments and questions, I'll go through them. We brought up the walkway a couple of times, and I share the concern that was mentioned that this may be an optimistic number, which concerns me, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I'd hate to, we, we've come in oftentimes, it seems, under. And I'd hate to, we, we've come in oftentimes, it seems, under, you know, cost more than what was projected. And I'd hate to have this happen on this one. And I wonder, Chris, I want to be sure that in addition to the per, the linear feet cost or whatever was built into this, there is money in there for some legal help in terms of regulatory concerns. As you know, we likely have some regulatory concerns going over the river from conservation, from DEP. And I want to be sure that number, if we're going to go with a project, we have a number to get it, to complete it.
Yeah, my only hesitation with that is it's, it's not our roadway, and the way Mass DOT works is that they have, as, I mean, they're a big organization, they have engineers, so they would actually design, and they would go out and get those approvals.
So, so you have, you have their-
Legally, legally, we, I don't think we can-
You have their commitment then, that they would, they would do that, that-
It's my understanding when these projects go, that they do the design because ultimately it's going to be their roadway.
Could you just confirm that to be sure that? I'd hate to get, you know, far into this and be, and be a muddy creek where we spend another significant dollars to get it through. I have a comment on the computers for the community center. I know it's a little money, but I'd like to be sure, you know, we had a presentation, I think, we haven't met for a couple of weeks, but last time we met, we had a presentation on computers. And I would just ask that you be sure you go back and be sure that those computers are compatible with the, what people sees as a future for software uses, that they're, they're in line with what other departments are used, so we're not, you know, have five different models of computers. We try to unify as much as possible, that we have an overall plan, and this fits into that. On the storm drainage project, Chris, how many more, I'm sure Link's not here right now, but how many more do we have to do to get up with the, you know, storm drain requirements?
Well, this is, this is a little bit different, and actually, we probably should have Bob Caffarelli come in, the town engineer, to kind of walk through. This isn't every single storm drain in the town. So a storm drain that you see on a street that plugs from one to another to another, this is where specific outfalls go into specific environmentally sensitive areas. So it's probably, I'm trying to remember what Bob had told me, I think he told me it's probably 50 to 100 storm drains that what we need to do is, as water comes in, that you could have the water come in and the pollutants would come in with it. Once it gets to a certain level, then it goes into the environment. One of the technologies that's out here that's being used, actually, one of the developers is doing it right here off of 39, there's a centrifuge that goes in. No, it's actually like a, a slide, if you would, and it creates a vortex which gets the chemicals to go to one section of the unit, and then the water goes out. So it's those individual ones, and I, I think that we really should have Bob come in and go through, but there's not all of them. There's only about, if I had to guess, 50 to 100 that we're looking at out of 1,000 plus that we have in the community.
I, you know, I think in the past that Link has had an overall plan of replacing so many of the storm drains every, every year or so, and I was wondering where we are on that plan, and we're going to have more-
Okay, because that's two different questions.
Two different questions.
Yeah, okay.
To Jack's point, if CPC doesn't cover it, and we, and we have to delay, it looks to me like we need to go back and, you know, what are those projects that makes sense to delay if we don't have money? I would argue that the shelter in Hinkley's Pond is probably one that's not critical we need to save. And probably, even though we like it, additional wiring or books part is not critical, it needs to be delayed a year. But that's something we're going to have to come back if some of these, if we have to get budget concerns, we're going to have to look at those projects, I think. Regarding CPC, when you show the numbers here of what's available and what's requested, does that include the debt payment?
Yes.
So those are included?
That's how the, the debt payments is included separately, so that this is available.
As far as these figures?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I just, I mean, I'm looking at all these numbers and the, especially the CPC items. I'm hoping for the same, positive outcomes on some serious issues, that these are taxpayer funds as it is, that these, these programs and policies that we've put forward hopefully will be funded because they serve the greater public. So I hope that CPC takes them seriously. One other question, and it's minor compared to the numbers we're looking at, but we talked about the Green Stamp community. I'm not quite sure where we are at this point, but one question I would have is, with the HVAC, some of those programs through Green Stamp, they would pay for some of that. So I'm wondering, how bad is the system? Is it something we could put off until we know if we're going to go down that road and maybe have some money there that we could possibly use for that type of project? So it's $140,000.
Yeah, we, I'm, I'm trying to remember, actually, I think, I think Janelle attended the beginning of the meeting. We, we had the folks from green communities coming out. I think Charlene's still in the room, but we have several things that we need to engage and, and work on. So most of those are from a regulatory standpoint that we have to accomplish. We did have a discussion, and Sean was there, that once we get designated as a green community, I think the first year, that would be about $140,000. So Sean was there, and he heard what would be available for, to be, to be spent towards projects. So he is linking that up exactly to your point.
Okay, great, great. No, I have nothing else.
If I might just to further that, I agree with what Chris just said, but also with these components that we're talking about, the software is actually no longer going to be sustained. So we need to upgrade the software for these systems, the HVAC systems in these different buildings. Otherwise, they will completely fail. So that's what needs to be upgraded at this point, is the software component of the HVAC, not the actual HVAC system.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. No?
I don't have anything.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to go the geek route here. Just for you, Mr. Chair, is FY '19 on this plan exactly the same as it was last year?
No.
All right. I'm going to go a little bit further than Leo. This is not a suggestion. It's not like in the good old days, we used to do something. The Charter under Chapter Nine deals with the capital plan. And in the way it deals with it is, we're supposed to be sitting here tonight, listening to 2025 being added to the existing six years of the plan. Aside from the fact that there are things that aren't capital here that are confusing the public probably because they're in the capital plan, every single thing that relates to a change, every single thing requires a two-thirds vote at town meeting, including the articles that are associated with it, according, according to the Charter. It's not a suggestion, it's very specific. I'm mystified, I mean, I, I understand about the value of each of the items in it, and it has nothing to do with that. The idea of this plan was to allow people to have their own plan about what was going, be going on and coming off. We didn't even have a discussion about what's coming off the plan. And we have available, say, say there's $40 million coming off of a plan, and we're going to, we're planning on putting 39 in as the year seven. This, that's not what this is at all. I find it difficult to, to vote in favor of this because we continually wind up jumping the line with things. It comes to mind that one of the only places that is playing by the rules is the fire department. I mean, they, they sit patiently in line for the six, seven years, and they get to the point where their building is up or whatever it is that they're requesting, but they actually have followed the, the chapter and verse of the Charter. As, as we sit here right now, we got so far afield from what this is supposed to be, I find it difficult to vote for it. That's it?
We're not voting on it?
At any point.
Okay. Chris, do you care to comment, or we?
Well, I, I guess I have a little bit of a hard time with the, with the presumption that if you have something in the fire department, and since it was brought up, you know, they had to move a few things because of the reality on the ground. And I think that you have to, this has to be a living document. It's too bad that Rich wasn't available for tonight, because I think he, he really does a, I think, a very eloquent job of kind of intimating that. There are things that change, and are we not supposed to be responsive to change and, and ignore items until they hit their sequence? And I guess I just, I, I get the intent of the Charter is that you want things to be laid out, you want to try to plan it out. We do plan out the debt service for the community to try. We've had that chart that shows how you take peaks and valleys out. So, you know, to me, this is one tool out of several tools in the, in the tool shed. But to, to assume that you're going to ask a department head, tell me exactly what you're going to need seven years to the day, and, you know, tell us what the price is, knowing that the price is going to change, I think that's an awful lot to ask. And I've been in a lot of communities, and there has to be some, some flexibility to, as things emerge, as things become a greater priority. And I have made, in the time that I've been here, every effort that as soon as something comes on, that we put it on the plan and, and vet it out. So I, you know, I, I guess I'm a little, to, to become more rigid, I don't know how functional that's really going to be for the, for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All that's well and good, but, and there is a mechanism. I'm just warning you that the mechanism is as follows. Nine-six-seven says additions, revisions, or amendments to the first six years, as outlined in Clause nine-six-three above, of the submitted seven-year capital plan shall be done as amendments to the main motion adopting the plan and shall require a two-thirds majority vote. That's the way it has to be done. It's not that you can't do it. Furthermore, it goes down later on in nine-six-ten. Any article included in an annual or special town meeting warrant which requests a capital outlay as defined in Clause nine-six-two above shall be considered amendment to the capital outlay plan and shall require a two-thirds majority vote. There's a mechanism, but that's the mechanism.
So I'm not going to allow a big debate on this because this clearly is going to be another topic, and I certainly appreciate the level of detail that's in this plan so that we can look at what's in front of us now. But clearly, with Don's comments, what the Charter says, Mr. Kakounis's comments, this is something that we need to take up. With that, Ed?
Having been on the board in 2012, when this section was amended, which basically took out the two-thirds requirement and took out the whole process of adding the additional year, which was proposed by the Capital Outlay Committee, Pete Watson as chair, which I opposed at the time, but it passed a town meeting. And if you look at the Charter today, none of that language you just read is in our current Charter.
Interesting.
So we will take this, we'll take this up again.
Michael, it might be useful for future discussions, Oliver, to have the previous capital, what the capital budget was last year, you know, to give us some history going forward.
Chris?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, you know, one of the suggestions that was made that, that we've obviously thought about is having a plan like this, and we do have an article number, so we can have a, a functional document that people can see at town meeting, how do we spend our money so we have a transparency that everything's accounted for? And I think, you know, well, people can have their warrant books from the year before, so, you know, it's, it's the worst kept secret if we're trying to keep last year's work secret. But, you know, we can, we can do, get rid of the $50,000 and simplify that, so we put in a simplified version into. And quite honestly, if it's a two-thirds vote to make these adjustments, then instead of a simple majority, we'll ask for two-thirds as, as part of that. That may be one item to just correct it. But I think you need to keep the functionality to the, to the document, or else, you know, we're going to be going to a place where if you could predict the future seven years out, you're a better person than I am.
Thank you. Chris, I had a couple of questions. One is on the sidewalk topics, the $250,000. I think that this wasn't a project approved by the state that they planned on paying for. We just don't know when.
That's correct.
Have we made any attempt at contacting our state representatives and politicians and ask them to try and drive this forward?
We have.
No response?
I think they've made inquiries. I haven't got any warm and fuzzy back that we've been moved up on the list from, you know, 10 to 20 years to two.
I'd like to try and, you know, re-initiate that.
Sure.
Let's get, let's get that moving again. That way, to Larry's point, if it goes over, then the money will be there, as well as if it's paid for by the state, it's better than our free cash. Jack?
Once we pay, we don't have any leverage.
Right. Thank you.
And so, you know, having that in the budget alone reduces our leverage. Actually spending it, we throw all the leverage out the door.
Chris, under wastewater, you had $20,000 for CDM Smith. There's nothing particular there right now that's just a placeholder?
We've included that in the operating budget for the last two or three years. That's to help us with the Dennis and Yarmouth.
So we may spend it, we may not, because I know we've got $150,000 grant placed for that as well, as a grant opportunity we apply for?
Yes.
DPW, three new trucks and one they pushed out. I guess my question is, has anyone looked into the lease option on these trucks? And we have two $80,000 trucks and a $55,000 truck.
Generally, in, in my experience, that when you analyze leases, the interest rate is, is close, it's been a while since I looked, but eight to 9%. We can borrow money at 2%, so if we were going to do anything in terms of that, I would recommend we do more borrowing ourself. And in this case, we're buying them outright, so there is no interest carrying cost. But generally, in my experience, that lease options are a more expensive option for bigger purchases. Small ones, copiers and things like that, it probably makes some sense to, to do. The tasers is another good example.
So, Chris, I won't get into the minutia on this, but I know that we have, so we have budget hearings and the board will vote on these at a later date. I'm just questioning why the cemetery needs an $80,000 F-350 and why parks? And Link's not here, so it's not a fair question, I guess, but it seems to me that a cemetery wouldn't need an F-350.
That probably is a better question for Link than a lot of truck buying.
The Harbor Master, reallocation of engineering money, that $90,000, is this to cover, is this for something in addition to what town meeting approved last year, the $3 million? Or is this to offset overages?
Offset overages, so this would be $3,090,000 available for that project.
And same with the $250,000 grant, that is to go over and above on the project, or is that to offset CPC article?
Yeah. Because the project's so tight, the recommendation would be to have that go above the $3 million, but only sufficient to cover the, any overages to get the project done on time.
And lastly, on that one, the $650,000 that wasn't recommended by you, but is in Capital Outlay Committee's approval list, what was that, $650,000?
Which one, which category, $650,000?
$650,000, yeah.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, which, which article?
Under Harbor Master, in the, you, you did not recommend it, so it's on the outside of it. But if you read the summary given by the Capital Outlay Committee, they did put in $1 million total for Harbor Master, recommended to Harbor Master. And, Chris, I don't believe you put this letter-
Yeah, on the, on the $650,000 number. I think one of the things that I was trying to do is, we knew that the number was going to, we knew that, well, now we know that the number is $3 million and we need additional. The question was, do we use $250,000, that was ADA, or do we use the $1 million that was what we submitted for through the Seaport grant? So that $650,000 number is, I'm trying to remember exactly where that came from, but I, I think that was a stab at trying to take, how do we take into account if we do get a supplemental appropriation?
John?
John, from Don Harbor Master. That was back when we initially did this plan. It was done so as if we were going to do a phased approach with downing property separate. I submitted it that way. That was not approved and not recommended, but it was left on the plan.
Okay. Now, the only reason I ask, John, is because it's in Capital Outlay Committee put it in the summary to us tonight, not on the, not on the spreadsheet, Chris, and the two-page letter that-
Yeah, that's right. We did, we segmented out the garage portion of the project, if you have to do it.
It's been mentioned, but the CPC meeting is Thursday night, and they only allow for public comment at the beginning of the meeting. They don't do it individually. So if anyone wants to attend the CPC meeting and speak on behalf of some of these things, it makes sense. The Hinkley's Pond- The Hinkley's Pond, um, one, and the Fish Kills, um, you know, Larry mentioned, maybe that's something that we push out. We can't push it out forever, because it is in our CDP.
I was talking about the shelter.
Okay.
That was there, the seventy-five thousand.
They wanted that.
The shelter was there because they wanted it.
Yeah, CPC.
Okay, well, forget that comment. I don't want to push back Hinkley's Pond, that's critical.
The board's done a good job outlining to CPC what's important to the board and what we think is important to the taxpayers, and the money is sitting there. Uh, on housing, we've waited four years, we've done no housing projects, and we've built up seven hundred plus thousand dollars of your money. So, if anyone could make it to the meeting, it would be, uh, it would be helpful. Ed, did you have a comment on that?
Yeah, the shelter will protect you for the sun as you watch the fish die.
Okay.
Forget I said that.
We're gonna, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna move on.
Our meeting adjourned.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome to the floor.
Thank you. Just gotta give them a minute to exit. As far as we do this, is there anyone for weekly briefing?
Larry Cole, your representative to the Cape and Vineyard Electric Co-op. Mr. Chairman, the Department of Public Utilities has rendered a decision in the Eversource Rate Case, uh, and I'm pleased to report that the net metering prices will be unchanged, but not because they decided that is a separate issue on its merits. They rejected a rate reclassification and rendered this moot, uh, and were at pains to point out that, uh, recipients of net metering credits cannot count on, in the future, that there will be no changes in the rates, but for temporarily, they will remain the same.
Thank you, Larry.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman and the board, I just wanna just briefly talk about some of the unsung heroes we have in the town. Last Friday, the, excuse me, uh, the temperatures were bitter, wind chills were well below zero, and we had a major water main break in Harwich Port. And the water department spent over twenty hours overnight through Friday trying to get that fixed, and they did, so I just wanna commend them. You know, you turn on the news and then fire department, they got helicopters over the, over the fire. That's all well and good, we appreciate the coverage, but many times the unsung heroes go unmentioned. Uh, I see Chris Hour here, his company's on Nantucket trying to fix the sewer system over there. That is a crisis. And so, I just appreciate what a lot of these folks do for us that you don't normally see on a day-to-day basis, so I wanna thank them.
Thank you, Norm. Anyone else for weekly briefing? Public comments and announcement? Just to add to what Norm had said, I had made a note to acknowledge the water department tonight. That was a, that was almost a twenty-four hour, uh, break. The Town of Brewster saved us with a, with a giant pump that they delivered to us. We were fortunate enough to receive an email today with pictures of our water department guys in a hole with freezing water. They had a very difficult time finding the shut-offs, so they were dealing with running water the entire time. We lost roughly one point four million gallons of water, on top of being in, um, Harwich Port right along the water, so the water table was up, as all you know, the tides are extremely high. So, it was a very, very difficult situation, which required a lot more excavating, 'cause it kept caving in, uh, but they did a phenomenal job. The next one would be the, um, tax collector's office. Due to some tax law changes, the Town of Harwich normally in December collects about two hundred and twenty-five thousand in taxes. This December, we collected two point eight million, because people wanted to pay their taxes early for FY eighteen and even the first two quarters of FY nineteen. So, I got several phone calls from citizens expressing their, uh, thanks to the tax collector's office for being patient, for laying it out, even making some signage, being friendly, walking people through the, the, uh, process. When I called the tax collector's office today, they noted that they worked through lunch and they worked late and they made it happen. But that was a significant, um, change in tax collection, obviously. Don't spend it. I think the last one was the Habitat for Humanity finally, um, closed on the property at ninety-three and ninety-seven Route twenty-eight. So, six lots there will be, will be designated for affordable houses. One lot is used as a driveway to go in, and the front two lots, which hold the houses, were conveyed back to Hetch and then sold to a private developer. So, Hetch is no longer involved, and that project is moving forward.
Do you wanna do this at this stage?
Which one is that, Chris? Yeah, go ahead, if you wanna go ahead and do that.
So, Mr. Chairman, uh, just something where we have the Harwich Community Meeting. No, may I do this at the end, but I just wanna make sure, uh, not everyone tunes into the end. Uh, but we have, uh, Town of Harwich invites all commu- citizens and business owners to attend the community meeting, the update on the design of the East Harwich Sewer System. This meeting is, will update East Harwich residents on the design process, schedule for completing the design, and when construction might start, should funding pass at the spring town meeting and the, and the annual election. Plenty of time for questions and comments. Uh, we did schedule that, uh, prior to, I hadn't thought about Martin Luther King, uh, birthday, and so we have that for Tuesday, January, uh, sixteenth at seven o'clock over at the Harwich, uh, Community Center in the multipurpose room. Uh, the one thing, normally the selectmen, when it's a Monday holiday, does revert to Tuesday, so I would at least like to, uh, attend the meeting, so however the board does it, I would excuse myself if the board has a meeting and then go over there. Uh, but I know there are board members who have, uh, attended several of these meetings, uh, already, so I don't know if the board wants to have a meeting over at the Community Center prior to and, and do a little bit of work, and then, uh, have a board presence for this, or, uh, how the board wants to handle that.
So, my thought would be to do the board meeting six to seven. We'll make sure that we keep a light agenda, and then we'll adjourn and go over to the, we'll post that there's a meeting, so we'll all be allowed to be there. Is that okay with you, Don? Janelle?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, the next board of selectmen's meeting will be Tuesday, the sixteenth, from six to seven, at the Community Center. Chris, I guess we'll have to check and make sure there's a room available.
Are you guys gonna have to meet here?
No, we'll meet over there.
In that same room? How am I supposed to fill you?
So, that won't be live, that will be recorded, just so the board's aware. My intent is to keep a very light agenda.
We could do it in the same room.
Do it in the same room.
Same room.
Okay.
Uh, we need to be sure we post a meeting, uh, the community meeting as well, since we'll probably hang on.
Okay, anyone else for public comment and announcement? Consent agenda, Larry?
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, move the following consent agenda items. A, approve the minutes of December fourth, two thousand and seventeen executive session. Approve the minutes December eleventh, two thousand and seventeen executive session. And approve the minutes December eighteen, twenty thousand and seventeen executive session. B, approve late submissions for twenty eighteen annual general license renewals. C, approve application for change of hours for Sunday, opening at ten AM for Moonshine Liquors. And D, confirm appointment of Charlene Greenall to town planner position as recommended.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda discussion. I just wanted to point out that the, uh, application for change of hours to Sunday at ten for Moonshine Liquors is common. We just have to notify the state. About fifty percent of our liquor stores in town have already opted that. And with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. New business, Sacro Tucket Harbor Restaurant options. There's a memo in our packet, Chris, I'm gonna let you take the lead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as the board, and certainly some members, I know yourself, attended a meeting, I, I thought it would be worthwhile to, uh, attempt to lay out a little bit of a process for, um, how we would like to go forward. I, I think in this case, uh, you know, John and I, um, act as kind of the, the people who put together the material, and I think what we're looking for is some direction from the board, uh, quite honestly. So, I think there has been, uh, some public interest in putting together a, uh, having a restaurant, uh, facility of some type, uh, at the harbor. I think people know, we've gotten good press coverage, that the, uh, the funds were not available to include that within the town's scope of its project, uh, so that, um, effort was made by some folks. I actually did receive an email yesterday, as a matter of fact, uh, on this topic as well, that they, another interested party that would like to have the town engage in a public-private partnership. Uh, in order to do that, I just wanted to kinda lay out a, a little bit of, uh, a couple what the options are and, and a little bit of the material. I know not everyone reads through this material, so maybe I'll just summarize it, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Uh, that, uh, we did design out a snack shack, uh, we went so far as to have that as an ad alternate, so we have some pretty good information in terms of what an estimated cost for that would be to build it on a, uh, public sector side. Uh, and the interest, uh, we also had, prior to the snack shack, a, uh, design laid out for a sixty-seat restaurant, uh, and what we have been told by some members in the business community that, uh, because of the seasonal nature of the business, uh, that they would think that a hundred-seat restaurant would be necessary in which to make a, uh, project economically viable for a, uh, private interest. So, we can prepare an RFP that kinda lays out all three of those options, we can lay out one option, whichever one the board wants. And I guess what we're kinda seeking tonight is some direction, uh, in terms of that, what you would like to have us do. In terms of, uh, some of the, the suggestions that, of, uh, some of the elements, uh, we did at last year's town meeting approve, uh, to do a lease of up to ten years for the snack shack. I think the intention was, we thought if we built it, then ten years would be viable for someone to actually be able to operate it, 'cause we had built it. I think now that the, uh, the dynamic has changed, and we're gonna ask someone to actually construct it for us, uh, that I would think most, uh, just thinking in terms of home, home mortgages, people have like thirty years, so I put in there the suggestion that if someone was gonna lay out between three hundred thousand and, and potentially, uh, close to a million dollars, that they would need more time than ten years to recruit that. Uh, that would necessitate going to, uh, town meeting to get a, uh, lease for that site for, I had in here a minimum of thirty. I had one person suggest to me ninety-nine years. So, somewhere between thirty and ninety-nine, I guess, are your, uh, your options. But, um, to at least lay that out, uh, we do, I do wanna make sure that just publicly that because I don't believe the board wants to sell that piece of property or give that property away, uh, that ultimately, whatever structure is constructed, would come back to the, to the Town of Harwich. And under that scenario, under prevailing wage, um, I don't know, law, definitely, uh, case law, uh, any structure that's built that ultimately will revert back to the town, whether it's one year or thirty years, uh, that we have to utilize, or that the contractor constructing it would have to utilize prevailing wage law, uh, to construct that. So, uh, it's not that a private party can come in and build a separate building that would be, uh, not follow, uh, municipal, municipal rules and regulations or state rules and regulations. Uh, we do have, uh, in here that the sixty-seat restaurant or the hundred-seat restaurant, we did have received planning board approval on the site plan for the snack shack and the affiliated, uh, area, uh, but the sixty-seat and the hundred-seat, we did not, so the, and, and I think we would have to have, the bidder would have to go back, make adj- adjustments to the plan, uh, put the restaurant located on there, and would have to go back to, uh, Planning Board and other regulatory agencies in, in order to get, uh, approvals, 'cause we really only got approval for the, the snack shack. Uh, and to that end, the septic system, uh, that we did, we, we knew that, uh, septic system for the snack shack would have to be an up, upgrade for the one that was just for the Harbor Masters', uh, location. So, uh, that would have to go back to the, um, Board of Health to get approval to put in a new septic system. So, that is something that, um, I think what makes sense is to finish the work that we've started, and this would be kind of a, uh, a project that would be undertaken next year. And then also, uh, any location of the facility, we did intentionally, uh, take out the boardwalk system, so it does not go by where the snack shack would have been. Uh, no reason to have a boardwalk in an area where we don't have a snack shack, so we would have to, uh, put back the boardwalk and the, uh, affiliated parking, uh, that would be contingent with that. And then just the last few comments here, that the snack shack, uh, has been through the process. Uh, the sixty-seat restaurant would have to go through all regulatory, uh, approvals, uh, including Conservation Commission, particularly for the, uh, I think Conservation Commission comes in where they're gonna design out the septic field and make sure that that's not within the, uh, necessary wetlands area or the restricted area. So, it, there is a, a considerable amount of work that has to be done. As you can see, I, John and I can probably invest a considerable amount of time trying to create several variables, and I think if the board had preferences for any one of these, I think we're looking to see if we can hone in and, and fine-tune. In terms of recommendation, you know, I, I think this is really a, uh, a community, uh, you know, a community initiative that wants this. So, if the board wants a snack shack, I think he and I are gung ho to do the snack shack. If you want the hundred-seat restaurant, we'll do the hundred-seat restaurant. If you don't wanna do any of it, that's, whatever you guys want, you're the elected officials. But I, I think in this case, this is very much a, uh, policy decision of what the board, the direction it wants to go in.
Thank you, Chris, thanks for the overview. Don? Start with the board for comments and wishes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Nothing can be finished within the scope of the article that was passed last year. I mean, we pretty much spent out everything, as, as I understand it, so, I mean, whatever, uh, anybody was looking to do, would have to go back to this next town meeting to get explicit approval for it. I don't know, I, yeah, I was at the town meeting as a citizen, uh, and there was considerable discussion about not wanting a restaurant because they didn't want a restaurant, not because we didn't wanna pay for the restaurant. There was, there was a lot of discussion about, uh, the fact that it was a unique property, it was on the harbor, and, uh, that the town was ceding that to a private interest at that point, and we explicitly said we wanted to go to a snack shack, uh, rather than a, a full restaurant. Aside from that, uh, just cautioning a couple things. You get into, involved with a thirty-year lease, uh, Julie's probably more proficient at this, what's a thirty-year-old, uh, commercial building that's sitting by the waterfront worth after thirty years?
Well, I mean, a thirty-year lease, you would also have to, it, within that lease, you would have that, that company or whoever was running it be responsible for various pieces of that property, meaning equipment, HVAC, you know, all of that, never mind the restaurant type of stuff, all of that would fall to them.
Yeah, I, I'm just pointing out that after thirty years, it's fully depreciated, pretty much from their point of view, uh, and it's, it's an old building. By the time we get it, 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 at the expiration of the lease, it's not going to be a new restaurant.
You, you answered.
But, uh, the other thing that came to mind is, they're building it on town property, they're not gonna be paying any real estate taxes.
Can I comment on that?
No, we'll, we'll, we'll get to that. Chris can comment on that.
You could do payment and lieu of taxes. There are vehicles that we could do to collect them.
You can include that in the lease.
No, I understand that, but I mean, that would be zero, to me. It is, zero isn't zero. Zero starts at what you would've gotten as property taxes and then whatever else you want as considerations, because you're, you're losing out on, presumably, we didn't buy the land as a town just so that we could have it go back to a commercial, and just 'cause it was on, it was listed for five years. A restaurant could have bought it, and it would've become a contributor to the tax base.
My only comment on that, and I'll let Chris answer the money part of this, is, we're not talking about the Downey property. We're talking about town property up on the water's edge.
But they could've.
That we've owned for a really long time, uh, that everyone in this town has contributed tax-wise to. Chris, do you wanna just answer the in lieu of?
Well, I, I think that there are mechanisms to put into the lease, where you could do a payment in lieu of taxes, or you could just say, here's what the equivalent of the taxes are and have that as your lease, but then you would have to give them some credit for building the building and then turning it over to the town. So, I, I think the mechanisms exist to capture those tax dollars that would otherwise be generated.
Janelle, Don, you got any more?
Yeah, just as a punctuation point, that would be presuming that we wanted to do it in the first place, and we were just looking for a mechanism to do it. It just didn't look like town meeting was agreeing with that.
Well, right now, all, all we're gonna try and do is get a consensus of the board on whether Chris should go forward with anything.
Snack shack.
Snack shack, good. That's what I thought. That's what I thought I heard you say. Do you have?
100-seat restaurant.
Anything else?
I have, I think that like Julie.
100-seat restaurant, is that what you said?
100-seat restaurant. I also agree that there are mechanisms to collect those tax dollars. And I have heard from my constituents, more support for a restaurant than not. So that's what I'm going with, 100-seat restaurant.
All set?
All set.
Julie?
So I have a couple of questions that I would like to look at, you know, get some information. The 60 versus the 100, I'm in favor of 60, definitely, 100, possibly. The only questions I would have are really based on parking. If we have 100 seat, where are we at with parking? We've got a lot of activity going on down there and we're going to draw more people down there because it's going to be nice. I'd also like to understand if there would be takeout because I think that helps too. I mean, if we, if we want to limit it because we have parking issues, then if we had 60-seat and takeout possibilities, so you could, you know, use those areas that are going to be all-new, I think that might help ease the issue of not having the 100. Although, to your point, if it takes 100 seats to make it really worthwhile, we need to, I think we need to look at all of those pieces. But I'm certainly in favor of the 60 or the 100. I think we scaled it back to a snack shack based on feedback, not necessarily from taxpayers understanding exactly what was going on. I think that some of that was people being afraid of the town becoming a landlord per se. Now we're in a different situation where we're talking about a private partnership willing to fund that. And then again, to your point, and obviously valid concerns about an aging building and how does that affect the town overall, but how does that also affect the developer? And what monies, we can certainly structure a lease that they would pay taxes. You can incorporate what the town is paying for insurance in that space. You can have them have all their own utilities, but anything that's affiliated with the town for any utility purpose, lighting, et cetera. You would factor that all in based on their square footage. I mean, there's all sorts of ways you could, you know, do that lease. So I think there's lots of opportunity there. And I think that one thing that we were talking about last year at town meeting, which we didn't have this information, that we would have a private group interested. And that, that's, you know, a benefit to the town as well as whoever else wants to step into that role. We all know restaurant work is hard work. You have to be in it for a while to make some money. And so it's a benefit for everybody, as I see it. So 60 versus 100, I just have questions on those pieces.
That's it? Larry?
Shocking.
Well, that's quite a bit because Julie answered a lot of questions. I'm, I'm in favor of the 60 or 100 to explore that. My question was primarily, I think, related to some of Don's point of view, is that I just want to be very sure that, you know, we get, we're not seen as unfairly benefiting a private group, that the town gets paid. And it gets paid a fair, fair share, even though it's town property. And it sounds like, you know, your comments and others, that that's, that's very doable. And it's, you know, Saugataut Harbor is an economic, can be an economic center. We haven't, haven't taken advantage of it. So if we can do that with private money and benefits the town, I would like to see that. I'm a little bit surprised. I've actually had, which a few of the abutters in that area approached me in favor of moving forward, which I guess I assume that the abutters may be the ones that were, might object to it. But I haven't, I haven't found that. But it has to go back to town meetings. So we put, you know, it depends on what the results are and then how good a case we make. But I'd like to explore it.
I've had that feedback as well.
I'd like to see the $250,000 CPC article pass and put in boardwalks that we squeezed out of it with our value engineering. And that's about it. I think that we're a, we have 37 restaurants in this town. We have a restaurant that directly abuts it. And to make a comment that we're, that we'd be unfairly benefiting one group, this is a waterfront property. This is, this is something that we just all stood at town meeting and supported $10 million over two years and said, "Come to the harbor. It's one of the beautiful spots we have. Come enjoy the harbor, come park here and for everybody to enjoy it." Now we're going to take and make a private group and we're going to block the view of the water. We've given, I don't believe, given any thought to all the private dock owners that now we're going to flood another 60 or 100-seat restaurant. Those people onto the docks and into that parking, to the comments about the sidewalk earlier and people walking down the sidewalk and on the road. What statement are we making by taking town-owned property and leasing it to a private developer on the water to put a restaurant? For what return? For, for half a million dollars, if it's a half a million dollars? We just asked the entire town to give us $10 million of tax money. And then we welcome them all to the harbor to enjoy it. And we have Buc-E's in Harwich Port, on top of the 37 restaurants. We have coffee shops, we have Dairy Queen, we have A&amp;W. We have a whole bunch of businesses that we should support and say, "Bring your food down to the harbor and eat it and we'll supply the trash can." But in my mind, absolutely nothing makes sense to me at that harbor.
Were you asking questions that you want answered?
There's no questions. It's the same question as yours. That's my opinion.
Okay.
There's no, I have no questions. The question is very simple. We should be supporting the people that pay taxes in this town, the businesses that we ask to come here. In my mind, that's what we should be supporting, not promoting private business on town property. And this isn't a hot dog stand at Redford Beach. Talking about 100-seat restaurant or 60-seat restaurant, that's what we're, that's what we're being asked. So I'm not asking for any rebuttal, you have my opinion. I'm going to ask for the, for the audience, if anyone out in the public wants to speak.
Karen Larson, 93 Neal Road. And independent of what gets decided with a restaurant or not, I am here to speak to the fact that all of this is on Route 28. And signage, it's my understanding, has to come from the state. And early on, the town should be getting better signage for the whole Sagatucket Harbor area. I did a little investigating and coming from the east, there is no sign that indicates there's a road that is Neal Road coming out onto 28. The sign on the east side before you get to Neal Road is pointing to the north, not to the south. Separately, we have the whole traffic going downhill as they come toward Neal Road. We have the ice cream shop on the corner that has three parking spaces that back out onto Route 28. And then they also come down Neal Road and they park in their lot on Neal Road. So we have the problem of inadequate signage of what's going on in the immediate neighborhood as you're coming from the east toward the harbor. We have 78 homes in Neal Road because of Sagatucket Bluffs and Walter Road as other sections of our community. So I speak individually as a member of the Howard Accessibility Rights Committee. I haven't addressed this with them. But I'm looking on this as an accessibility rights issue because there are a number of elderly people on Neal Road that are much shorter than I am. I happen to be tall and I look up and, oh, I think it's all clear on that hill. Well, I pull out and would you know, they come speeding down and they're right on my tail, even though I didn't see a car coming. Now, they're short, older people that don't have that visibility that I have. So we have waiting, a disaster happening as we have increased use of coming to Sagatucket Harbor, whatever is there. And we have to get Route 28, I imagine it's 28 that does all the signage? That's one of my questions.
State.
We have to get on that early. And there should be a sign approaching Sagatucket Harbor. I actually did a map of the whole intricacy, whether you want to have it to study. I'll let you have it as a copy.
Yeah, give it to the town administrator.
Michael, I have a question for Karen.
Also, we have Wychmere Village that is just beyond, on the east, to the ice cream schoolhouse shop. So we have an awful lot there. And so here is the whole issue, why we have to get the state working on adequate signage for whatever happens at Sagatucket Harbor. Because they will be.
Can you go back up to the mic because that's how they filmed it? Thank you.
So I was shocked when I just checked out last week that there was no sign showing that Neal Road is coming into 28 at that point. And it's showing as if there's a road coming in from the north. I don't know, is it a driveway that is right near it or is it an extra sign for Gorham Road? But anyway, there's no sign saying, "Watch out, there's a road that's coming in from the south" right as people are coming above the speed limit down that hill. And it's a favorite spot for police to park because they know there are speeders. But we don't have adequate signage and we need to have the state working on that as soon as possible.
Thank you. Larry had a question?
Karen?
Yes.
This has some history. You brought this to attention a few years ago, to the state, I believe. And what happened with your previous discussions about the signings?
I have no idea. But this is appropriate because here you have state money coming in to this harbor too. And so this is the time to act, from the Board of Selectmen to whatever appropriate agency, that that signage gets started right away. Because even with the harbor as it's going to be done, whether there's a restaurant or not, there is danger already, or there's been danger right along. So that's my point.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to get up and speak. First and foremost, this will at least cure anyone from getting up at town meeting and say that I did not participate at any public hearings or public discussions on this prior to town meeting, which I always seem to be accused of. But for the record, I'm usually in bed at 7 o'clock because I'm up at 4:00 in the morning. But I'm here and thank you for listening. The Harbor Project, as far as I'm concerned, is a perfect case of how a screw-up can get screwed up. We can sit here and argue to no end about what we, what we believed happened at town meeting. I was at town meeting, I have my opinions. You guys were there, you have your opinions. The fact of the matter is that I brought forward an amendment to split these projects, to build the shop, to build a Harbor Masters building, and then come back later for the snack shack. That was turned down, subsequently town meeting voted $3 million. And I believe, in fairness, that half of the people in that room left there thinking the $3 million was going to cover the three projects. Now, we can argue that point until no end and it really doesn't mean anything. Where are we today? Today, we have a shop. Today, we have a Harbor Masters building. We've spent over $3 million, we do not have a snack shack. Now you're talking about a restaurant. I do come here with some background in commercial development. And I, as a taxpayer and as a person who paid for $825,000 plus to buy the Downey property, and when you asked me to pay my share and my taxes to buy that, you made a point that we needed parking. We needed to have areas for cars and trucks with trailers as they used the harbor. We needed to buy that property to enhance the already, already overtaxed Sagatucket Harbor. What's happened in 2017? We have an active restaurant next door that still uses parking there. We have a proposed healthcare center now moving in across the street that from what I understand is looking for 40-plus spaces there. We have an excellent, hopefully, we're going to have an excellent Harbor Masters shop, which is going to take up some parking, obviously, for his equipment and storage and things. We have a new Harbor Masters building and it's going to be going in. And we've taken the steps to put in a really attractive boardwalk so that, as the chairman said, taxpayers like myself, who don't have a boat and don't often frequent the harbor, can come down there, park, and walk along the boardwalk and enjoy an afternoon looking over the beautiful harbor. Now you're contemplating putting in a 100-seat restaurant. To me, I think you first and foremost need to consider parking. We're going to be back here in five years looking to buy yet again another piece somewheres else because we don't have enough parking down there. And if you don't think that's going to happen, I would love to hear that argument because quite frankly, that's why we bought the Downey property. One of the reasons anyhow was parking. If you are going to, as the Board of Selectmen and the executive body of the, of the town of Harwich, if you're going to go down this road, then do so as a commercial developer and protect my asset. I own part of that harbor, along with every other resident in this town. And do the right thing. Let me give you just some very quick numbers that I did back there, sitting there. We bought, I think it was 2011, correct me if I'm wrong, plus or minus a year, the Downey property for $825,000. In order to come to what would be a fair rent lease payment for a piece of land, which abuts the harbor, so it's closer to the harbor than the Downey property, and in 217, I'm just going to throw a number out. What do you think that piece of land might be worth? Let's use a million and a half, just for giggles. And please remember that this is, and I'm not 100% sure, but to my belief, it is the only municipal harbor on Route 28, the entire stretch of Route 28 on the south side. This is a primo piece of property. If any developer owned this, believe you me, they would getting top dollar to have a restaurant put there. Top dollar. So let's act like a developer. Forget about room, meals tax, I don't want to hear that. Because wherever this restaurant goes in this town, I'm going to get meals tax from them. I'm going to get labor from them, wherever they build, I'm going to get labor from them. That's irrelevant. What I want to know is, what is that restaurateur going to pay for the lease on that property? Quite frankly, a bottom-line figure would be about $125,000 a year. That's just to lease the property. And I disagree with, with Chris Glock. I've done a number of commercial lease operations. There is no value to the building at the end of the lease. When the leaseor leaves, that building becomes the property of the tenant, the owner. I've never in my, my time have known that the owner of the land gave the leasee a dollar value at the end of the lease. Certainly, and this is what you have to be aware of, restaurant businesses on Cape Cod are the number-one failing business on the Cape. That's fact. Hundreds of them are started here on the Cape and over 50% of them fail in the first year. So you have to protect my asset and make damn well sure that if this person comes in and builds a building, that you're going to have an ironclad agreement that we're not going to be faced with a $3 million bill to buy that building that they thought they were going to be able to make and ends that they did not make. Make sure you protect my assets and say, "If you don't make it in five years, too bad. See you later. If you can't make this lease payment of $125,000 or $150,000 a year, too bad." On top of the lease payment, not in lieu of, and top of the lease payment, they are going to be subject to personal property tax, which is okay. But I don't need to hear that because wherever that restaurant opened in this town, I would be getting their personal property tax. My main concern is, what is the dollar value they're going to pay for that piece of property? And if you let it go for anything less than what a developer would let it go for if they owned it. owned it, you are subsidizing a business. And don't try to do that with my money. I'm not here to subsidize businesses. That's not what we're here for. And we have a beautiful piece of property. My suggestion to you is pony up your mistake, go back to town meeting, tell them, you know what? We screwed up. We didn't come with the bids in hand. We would like to consider putting a snack shack back there because you guys, obviously, you won the vote on town meeting, and put forward whatever it takes to build a snack shack. If it's a million dollars more, million and a half more, whatever it is, have the bids in hand and go back to town meeting with it. But stay away from leasing my property, especially if you're even thinking about subsidizing people with it. Because that's wrong. And a 100-seat restaurant there is going to be a nightmare. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you for the opportunity. The waterfront project at Sacotucket Harbor, it's a beautiful spot and it was well-needed to upgrade it and do what they're doing. I know parking's been an issue there over the years, and the Downing property was bought for more parking. Now, I know a lot of the square footage of the land is being used up for, you know, workshops and bigger offices for the Harbor Master, and at some point, a snack shack or something else. I know there's been more slips added. So, my question is, where we started in the beginning, how many parking spots we have? And what do we have now before we move forward and put a 60- or 100-seat restaurant in there? It seems, I've never heard the real numbers. It just, everyone assumes or says we have more parking, but I haven't seen that. And I totally disagree with moving and leasing a 100-seat restaurant or 60. A snack shack, I totally agree. I think it's nice for the people on the boats and people to come in and see the view and look at it. But to come in and sit and park for an hour, and really, I think the parking's going to be an issue, especially with the existing restaurant you have. And you're going to have quite a big healthcare facility across the street with time to come, by the sounds. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Chris. Anyone else?
I'm going to be a broken record on this, but just to talk about the parking issue, the safer the sidewalks are, the more people are walking from town. If there is no restaurant, people are taking buckies down there, then the safer sidewalks are the answer for that. So, I just want to be the broken record again.
That's okay. Thank you. Chris, with the feedback, I mean, I think the number-one thing is parking. I mean, the Outer Cape Health thing wasn't mentioned until just now, but that is, they have made an informal request to the town for up to 40 parking spots, if I'm correct.
Well, I think there's a couple of things. One, prior to us acquiring the Downey property, there was no parking there. So, Downey has added to the parking mix. And I don't, John made, 80 parking places have been added by having Downey. We do have or will have an application for Outer Cape Healthcare, and they have indicated that, and I think they did it publicly when they were here, that about 40 spaces is what they're looking for.
If I may add, they've been looking at that, and they're reducing that number now.
One at a time. Go ahead.
They're looking at maybe 14 additional parking spaces, as much reduced there, what they see their plan to be.
Right. Well, where I was kind of going with that, in a worst-case scenario, you're talking about 40. The fact that if we know that there is going to be a snack shack or a restaurant, you know, part of the reason why you have Planning Board is to make those determinations in terms of where does the parking come from and how do you arrange those parking. One thing we know, it is a tourist site. It's heavily used in Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. It's probably less used at the beginning of the week. So, I think some of those, you know, decisions can be laid out. You know, one of the things I just, and maybe I misspoke when Leo equated that, I didn't mean to say that we would be paying for the building. Talking that, at the end of the 30 years, we get a building given to us as part of the project. So, if I misspoke, I apologize for that. In terms of, I think that we need to, you know, if the Board, and just kind of doing a head count, and there's three that kind of said 60 or 100, and one said snack and one said nothing. So, you know, I always like unanimous, I mean, to be perfectly honest. But it does sound like you'd like to have us explore doing the 60 or 100. And we will do our best. I think that the law expects an awful lot. For me to understand to be a restaurant entrepreneur and know what it takes is a far cry from what they, you know, expect out of me. So, we will try to get an RFP from another community that has a similar arrangement. And I think, the first things first, if we want to explore the 100-seat, we need to go to town meeting with a number, tell them that this is what we're contemplating, so that was fair disclosure. And then, John Giorgio, I had one conversation with him, this is several months back, but, you know, I don't think that it's fair to ask any person to put in a bid with town meeting as a question mark in terms of the length of time. So, I think really that the proposal should be to go to town meeting with potentially a 100-seat restaurant and minimum of 30. You know, I guess I'm kind of kiddingly saying between 30 and 99, but we need to pick some number and put in there. And if town meeting says yes, go, then we would do the RFP to see. And the bid law is clear, I'm supposed to maximize the profit for the town as much as I'm able to do. So, I get my marching orders in terms of the bids that will come back. I think that the big question for me is, it doesn't make sense to go through all this effort to not have any bidders. And I think we will get some bidders.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On two levels here. Adding to what Chris Hour had said, I didn't hear a number. We started out adding the Downey property. We had X number of spaces at the harbor. So, it's X plus Downey. There's a finite amount of square footage that, even with the purchase, that we have now available to do something with. The Harbor Masters office is going to be bigger than the old Harbor Masters office, so that's going to occupy some square footage. The, you're going to have a restaurant, a snack shack, whatever, that will sit on the square footage also. So, what number of net spaces do we have now, once the maintenance facility?
Yeah, we can get you the plan.
Once the maintenance facility and the office is factored in occupying square footage, how many spaces, in addition to what we started with, are we getting?
We are adding 90 spaces on the Downey property. And...
But what are you taking away?
I know what you're asking. I don't have everything in front of me. Apologize, I don't have all the numbers in front of me. We are losing a handful of spots when we're talking about the Harbor Master office being moved 10 feet back and slightly to the east, the footprint, a handful, five or so. And then, we're expanding. We were going to lose an additional eight spots or so when the snack shack was going to be put in, but that now has been taken out of the plan.
The maintenance facility?
The maintenance facility is not taking up any parking. That 90 spots on the Downey property includes the area that the garage will be built on in the east corner of the Downey property. So, I mean, we have a good net of additional spaces. I don't have the definite number. I'm sorry I didn't come prepared with that, but it is significant, and it's needed.
Chris, just to touch on what Don said, I mean, this isn't a time-sensitive issue. I think that the first thing that the Board really should see to be a responsible Board is the traffic impact, the parking, the number of parking spots from John. John, I know you're getting 12 new slips, 11 new slips. How many parking spots per slip do you assign? Do they only get one car?
I mean, it's not defined on per car by slip. I mean, there's a formula that Ally has from the Planning Department for Marina. She's the better...
So, Chris, I'd like to see, I know Outer Cape Health got through this without having to have Cape Cod Commission come in, but they've got 40, roughly 40 employees is the number I got, plus a 19-room medical center, or it could even be more than that. But based on Larry's number, it's 104 cars.
104 cars, yeah.
104 cars is their current.
I think we're...
But I would like to know the traffic impact to that area, based on the woman's comments on signage, based on why we bought the Downey property, which was parking needs at the harbor. And again, you can run with a RFP if you want, but it seems to me that we should be responsible and talk about the amount of cars and the need. And again, you know, I don't know why we're not finishing spending our $10 million and enjoying our harbor for a year, and then bringing this back after we see what this $10 million renovation of the harbor is going to bring to the harbor, and why we need to jump and run. Six months ago, we talked about tax collection, and we haven't made that decision yet on how we're going to do that. And I can name seven or eight other projects that we're in the middle of. Why are we making more work at this point, I guess is my point. Don, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did have a couple of other things in addition to that. I am inalterably opposed to the idea of going to ask town meeting for conceptual approval of a lease. Most of the things that have gone wrong in this town over the last 30 years have been on that basis. The state law calls for town meeting to approve leases because the presumption was that you knew what you were giving to know what you were getting. So, it was fleshed out. It was like, this is the property, this is the, these are the bids that we received, this is what's going to be built, do you guys approve it or not? When we have gone down the route of, "Trust us," and things start going sideways, it's because we're not following what the actual intention of the law was. So, quite apart from what Mr. Giorgio is proposing, the idea of going to town meeting is so that you, so that people who own the land know what it is that they're getting for what it is they're paying for. And we're not doing that if we go to town meeting with nothing in hand, just say, "We'd like to do a 100-seat restaurant. You guys okay with that?" As for the spaces, there's a difference between what's going to physically be occupied and what they're required to do on a site plan review. I mean, there's a factor guide for how many spaces that have to be associated for what kind of use. That's why I asked the question when they were here. They were pretty explicit that they didn't anticipate actually utilizing them for their operation. But they still have to be able to show on paper that they've met that threshold of the spaces that a site plan would require for that use. So, I don't expect to see 40 cars sitting there. I really don't.
Thank you, Don. Julie, you've been waiting patiently.
I don't really know where to start. Because ultimately, we're talking about, once again, waiting and extending, and yet, the dollar cost and talking about all the different charges of this project and how they've gone wrong, because people have varying opinions on the construction phases, the design phases, all of which cost more, or value engineering, all these pieces. But now, we're going to talk about waiting again, when everything's going to cost us more in another couple of years.
Can I just answer that? Please.
No, you can't, because I'm talking...
We're not paying for it.
So, ultimately, I'm saying, on top of that, we're talking about blocking height and not allowing people down there to bring their buckies. That's not true. You can bring your buckies, or you can get takeout, or you can sit in a restaurant. We're talking about blocking views. We're not going to be able to block views. You're going to have to design something complimentary to what's already been designed. There are height restrictions, there are FEMA flood zone elevations, there's all these things that we need to meet. This decision doesn't get made right here tonight by anybody saying, "I want a 100-seat restaurant." We all know that. There's Planning Board, there's zoning board, there's conservation. We have all these elements. From what I recall, when Outer Cape was here, I believe we asked the question about parking. And it was a minimal number of spaces.
I did.
Right?
Yeah.
So, their impact is no more than I see it as Brack's impact on the parking lot. So, ultimately, we've got all these varying pieces, and we're trying to have the taxpayers be able to have a place they can go and enjoy more than they have been able to, myself included. I don't have a boat. Great opportunity. However, to Leo's point, do we need to make a careful analysis on how we structure the lease and what we look at? Sure, of course we do. We can even put in that lease that we want a percentage of the business. That's not unheard of. So, there's all these elements that we have to look at, and we do have to do our due diligence. We've got to look at the parking, and to this woman's point that lives on Neil Road. Those are all real concerns to everybody, because not only do we care, we also care about the neighborhood, but we also care about the impact it has on the town. So, overall, I think that it's interesting that we're trying to delay, delay, when we're going to cause ourselves to probably pay more and more money for this project as well. So, I agree with many of the points that have been brought up tonight, but I also think we need to dial back some of these things. I have no interest in impacting businesses currently here. I think we created an Economic Development Committee for the purpose of the exact opposite. I also think it's very difficult, as a citizen of this town, we're talking about a seasonal restaurant. We're not talking about a year-round restaurant. So, as a citizen of this town, I can't go to any restaurant I want in the summer. I barely can go to any restaurant. So, there's certain restaurants in town that don't even serve a full dinner or something like that. So, that's not the same as saying that we have 37 restaurants that we're going to impact all over the place. So, we have to look at each piece that we're talking about, try to digest it, but I don't think that we should try to slow-track it so it goes nowhere. I think we have to be realistic. I think we have to be sensible, economically sensible. But we also need to look at what we're trying to do to a certain part of our town that is ours. So, I ask everybody to go forth looking at it very carefully, and certainly dissecting pieces, but understanding that there's a larger piece here that we're trying to do for the town, and to draw a new portion of our town into what is economically viable.
All right. So, just one question. What's it going to cost us?
You can go to the hot dog stand. It's no problem.
What's it going to cost us? No, no. What's it going to cost us?
I don't have a dollar figure.
No, no, you just said it's going to delay. This is a public-private lease.
So, I mean, just let me put out, the part I'm talking about delaying is, every time we delay things with construction costs, we analyzed the various parts of the architectural process and the design process, and we talked about all the reasons for, why did this continue to grow? Why is this number growing? Well, because construction demand, as we know, causes an impact to the cost. Overall, the particulars, the steel, whatever the commodity is at the time, and what is the demand on that commodity, changes based on that.
I get it. And you gave me a great education on value engineering. I actually know what it means now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
But again, what's it going to cost the town? We're not building this.
I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, every time that you're saying that we're going to delay this, we should wait, ultimately, we're talking about a private entity coming in, right? That private entity, building that structure, that's an economic impact on that.
Okay.
Ultimately...
That's the answer. Thank you. Larry?
Very briefly.
That's not supposed to be long.
I may not have been clear. My point, Leo, was exactly yours. We need to develop this as a commercial developer would and get the same rents that, so we're not subsidizing anyone. That was the point I was trying to make, and maybe I didn't make it clearly enough. I would also make the point that Harrisport has been more active this year than I've ever seen it in my almost 20 years here. And I would argue, to some extent, that is not because we have decreased number of restaurants and so we're increasing, it's because we have more restaurants. That we're becoming actually known around the Cape for being the place for restaurants. And another restaurant, I would add, it is a good case to be made that I would further that identity of Harwich as being the place to go to enjoy the summers. I don't see it as necessarily being a negative for the other restaurants in town. The third point I'd make is, everyone would say it over again, I think Leo has and others have said, that we need to proceed very carefully on this. And all we're asking, I think the discussion we're having tonight is, should we start that initial step and get some information? And does it make sense? It may be. It does make sense.
Thank you, Larry. Cindy?
Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce in Harwich. I sat back there very quietly because I'm not taking a position on this as the Chamber of Commerce. We, you all made very great points. Thank you all for that. But, as Michael alluded to, we have 37 restaurants in Harwich right now. A number of them had to close early this year because of the fact that business did slow down, due to weather, due to a lot of things. But, we all are, we did develop an Economic Development Committee. Unfortunately, no one has come forward yet to be on it. But, we are taken care of, or we should. we are taken care of, or we should first and foremost, take care of the businesses that we have welcomed into our town. We have shown that we are a great town to do business in. Michael just brought up a point that I think we should think of. Yes, when you wait, things go up. Things may go down. So Chris brought up a point, something went down throughout the process. Let's see what the harbor project looks like. And then see how our businesses that are already here are doing. They may say, yes, let's also add something. They may see that it is a great thing. But let's take the chance, see how everyone is successful after this project is done. Before we go and add anything else, yes, competition's great. But let's first see how it all pans out before we jump and ask everyone to do these other things. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to try to really be brief. Uh, Ms. Kavanaugh, you know, I've heard you say a number of times tonight, there was problems with buildings and problems with estimates, uh, steel prices coming in higher, building things coming in higher. All that is all well and good, but it doesn't mean the tink is damned. The mistake was made when you went to town meeting without bids in hand, period. That's where the mistake came from. And all I'm asking you to do tonight, that if you're going to go to town meeting and you're going to ask them permission to lease a piece of land for thirty to forty years, quite frankly, I would suggest that you do forty because I don't think thirty is going to break it. Thirty years, I mean forty years, that you have a plan. You have drawn on that plan with azimuths and bounds, saying this is what we're planning on leasing. We know a thirty, a sixty to hundred foot restaurant will fit in here. And we are going to ask a hundred and sixty thousand a year for a lease payment. That's what you're going to bring to town meeting. Anything shy of that, and I won't hold you to the number, please, but somehow reach a number for a lease payment so that the voters and the owners of that land know what they're approving. Because I'll tell you right now, if you get up and ask them for a blanket, we want to lease some portion somewhere on the harbor for some undisclosed amount of money. But oh, it's going to bring meals tax and this and that and all that crap. I'm going to be standing up opposed to it. If you want to lease something, let us know exactly what you want to lease and let us know exactly how much money I'm going to be getting back. That's the only thing I ask. Thank you again.
Thank you. Chris, do you want to put together what you can for basic numbers, I guess? I mean, I, I think for me, the, the parking is, is one question that we really need to address.
Yeah, I, I just, I'm a little bit concerned that I don't, I, I think that we will be able to put together an RFP and get some concepts from people. We're not going to be able to answer every single question. I, I think, I appreciate Leo's comments. We could probably show the area and say, this is the minimum that we're looking for. And, you know, I think the, the point about the, if we're going to offer something for forty years, are we going to get a good document if someone knows, well, they have to go to town meeting and I, you know, how much work are they going to put in if town meeting votes it down? So the whole point and, and maybe the thought process needs to be, we go to town meeting and say, we will bring back whatever the successful lease is or, or whatever, do a, a framework. So, I mean, I could take a stab at, at, at seeing what we have. I just don't want the board to think that, you know, I'm, I'm not a real estate tycoon. I don't know this stuff. We'll take a stab at doing something to see how do we maximize the, the amount of money.
I think your idea of going and getting some information from other municipalities and doing some parking spots and bringing back more information before you go through the process of developing an RFP makes more sense to me. I'd like to see the information. I'd like to see the parking and I'd like to see, and, and you're right, Chris. It's an unknown. I think it's an unknown for everyone at this table. Because municipalities, I don't think generally do this. So I'd like to see a little more information before we decide on making an RFP that we're going to go to town meeting for. We're, you know, that's my sense.
Dennis may be useful.
I'll do my best to, to bring something back, John and I.
So I'll, we'll retopic this.
All right.
Thank you. All right. Next up, Housing Choice Initiative. Uh, this is in the packet, Julie, I think this is part of what you were at, the Housing Institute.
Right.
Governor Baker's now brought forward a Housing Choice Initiative and really it's in the packet to see if we want to pursue this. The way I read it, um, we have more than seven thousand people.
Right.
So we don't qualify.
We wouldn't get that. No, we wouldn't qualify for the incentive.
Grants.
Yeah.
Yeah. So do we want to continue? Do we want to look into this?
I think so, yeah. I mean, it's talking about zoning.
Don?
I, I, I kind of feel the other way, but not because I'm against, obviously not because against the housing part. It seems to be kind of a trap. There's nothing that matters more to people than the zoning because it really dictates what the value of their properties are. It shouldn't be easy to change zoning. The, the trade here is that we got to go from two thirds down to fifty percent plus one. Like I said, it shouldn't be easy to change zoning. Uh, we have done top of the shop housing. We have a hu- a housing fund. What, uh, what they are offering, and it would be far more beneficial to the town is we're one of the strange states when it comes to zoning about grandfathering. I mean, when you start changing zoning, if, if somebody doesn't ch- touch their lot lines, they get to enjoy whatever zoning was there when they had the property. That would be meaningful in terms of our flexibility, but this is like, we're giving up an awful lot to get how much as a town.
Larry?
Yeah. I, I have a question that, that even through Google, I couldn't figure out the answer to. And that is, is, uh, what's the mechanism to change the requirement for two thirds vote for zoning to fifty percent plus one zoning? Is that, does that require a two thirds vote at town meeting?
Good question. It makes sense.
Yes, it is. It makes sense because that's proposal of Governor Baker now, you know, is part of this. But, you know, everything you read is very few have done it. So that's my first question.
It's a good question.
Because it's not obvious. You know, everyone has basically two theories. At the Housing Institute, you can, you know, anytime you get facts and figures, people can interpret them differently. But certainly it was brought to our attention, I think, every single meeting, that the number one obstacle we have in the state as a whole, in the Cape Cod in particular, uh, to getting affordable housing is the difficulty we have in changing, uh, zoning to, to put in uh, high, where the town agrees, but, uh, you know, some higher density housing for affordable housing. That's listed and, you know, you can believe it or not, but it's multiple different sources, multiple different speakers make that point over and over again. And so I, I do see this as being a critical issue and, uh, certainly the state did by trying to dictate to us if we get these grants, we make that as part of the process. But it may be hard to get through if we take a two thirds vote.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I don't know. It seems like it's a logical thing to do, to, to go ahead and change that if we can and but we can't, we don't, we don't, um, qualify for any grants. So what is the, what is the benefit of doing this? As far as the state level, I mean.
So a lot of the problems in terms of developing, uh, more density in housing is, is the zoning bylaws and, and the amount you're able to put on a lot.
Mm-hmm.
In addition to that, even, even the accessory apartment, they didn't adopt, our zoning board did not adopt, um, sorry, planning. Didn't adopt, um, the accessory bylaw that the town, that Cape Cod Commission was trying to get various towns. Some towns have, some towns haven't. We're not alone in not adopting that. But the accessory apartment would allow you to flip your, like, you can either add onto your house or have a garage that you convert to an accessory apartment. Or, and you can have people live in that, or you could say, well, I'm going to go live in that and rent my house, right? So we're still sticking to our way we do this in terms of accessory apartments. You just have to go through a process. But that process is expensive. And it may not be to other people who might have plenty of money to do it, but it usually means that you have to engage an attorney to represent you, right? Uh, you've got to go through the planning process and do whatever way they want to tweak your plan. And ultimately, this kind of minimizes that. And then this goes further. This says, let's revamp the zoning. And you can sign up to revamp your zoning by saying you'll adopt this. So that means that it's easier to create density. And it, and again, within reason, it doesn't, you don't give up all your rights as, as a town to make these decisions. It's basically, as I see it, and I haven't researched further than reading this document, is a loosening of zoning. So I, I think to Larry's point, I mean, this was drilled into us at the Cape Housing Institute. The need to, to address zoning issues, trying to change zoning laws is very difficult, a lengthy process. This helps to kind of fast track it.
Gotcha. But let's do it.
Chris, you want to weigh in on that? Do you have any comments?
Yeah, I, I think, I just need to get more material. I mean, how, what is the mechanism to, how to get this in for town meeting?
So consensus of the board to continue to explore?
Yeah.
Through Chris and the Housing Committee?
Mm-hmm.
And you'll give it to the Housing Committee?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Next up is discussion of reallocation of positions in community development department and administration.
It just, uh, there's, there's a couple of things this evening, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is more just to update, uh, the, the, um, make sure that the, uh, the board's kind of aware. It's a twofold part. Just want to make sure that we have both components on here, but, um, upstairs, we have a couple of positions that already exist, administrative assistant. And we had a vacancy that was occurred in one of the administrative assistant. And what we have administratively thought about is that we have some pretty good quality people that we're able to bring in when we go to the executive assistant level, uh, as opposed to the administrative. And the idea behind this is that we currently have three administrative assistant. We, the proposal would be to update two, upgrade two of those to executive assistants and to not fill, uh, one of the positions. Take, if you would, some of that thirty five hours and add it to the assisting conservation agent position, which is currently nineteen hours part-time, and move that position up to full-time. So the benefits from the administrative assistant position would basically transfer over to that one. And the idea behind this is that we would realize some, uh, cost savings by doing it. And I know the board has expressed a, a real interest in seeing if administration could, uh, hire someone kind of consistent with the town of Dennis and have a, um, kind of a, a litigation specialist that we would uh, be able to hire at a clerk type level at the administration side. The idea is to, to see if we are able to kind of, uh, just allocate resources a little bit differently to get some, uh, better results. So the, the two-part component to it is the, the first part is to, um, in, in a nutshell, uh, remove, uh, the two titles of administrative assistant and move it up to executive assistant. These titles already exist in the plan, so it's just really how we're going to allocate or reallocate. Not fill, uh, one of the administrative assistant positions in conservation, but up, uh, increase the hours from nineteen to thirty five of the assistant conservation agent and have that position be now full-time. Take some of the dollar savings that we have, and I have a separate memo in here uh, that has reallocation of administration staff. Uh, and in that, we would take the sixteen hours, uh, we believe we have sixteen hours a week administrative assistant to put into, uh, administration to help with the legal, uh, coordination uh, in the office, to help track legal cases, uh, and do some other administrative duties, free up some of the staff downstairs.
Thank you, Chris. Don?
I tend to agree with everything except for the, that, the in-house legal. I really didn't contemplate it being a clerical kind of legal thought. You know, somebody that could help keep us out of trouble. I mean, and Dennis does have, uh,
Should be modeling on the way, the way Dennis does it.
Yeah, but they're, they're not as low a level as this suggests. I don't know that it's worth it unless you upgrade that position to something more credible. The rest of this all looks good and, and I'm really pleased to see a focus on human resources and some other things that we've never actually, as I traverse other town halls, go past human resources offices and some legal offices and, uh, there's a contracting point person. So, I mean, it's a step towards getting us in the game, but the one that doesn't seem like it's worth it is the legal, uh, I mean, it looks like a kind of junior paralegal.
Thank you, Don.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I like the, um, the initial part and the only question I have on the, changing the title to executive assistant. That doesn't affect anybody in those current roles. They're able to, to meet those qualifications.
They would move up, yeah.
Right, like, it wouldn't displace anybody, is, right, yeah. And I, I agree that, you know, a- anything that we can allot more to human resources, I think is a good idea. Um, I think it, it's overall a smart move, but it also ties into legal, I think, in, in the sense that I do have reservations about, uh, how we go about in-house legal, so I'll leave it at that until I learn more.
Larry?
Oh, go ahead. You know, Mr. Chairman, I realized I didn't really cover the full second memo, uh, with the departure of the assistant uh, to now become the town planner. And I do want to at least publicly, uh, just say this, that I, I think that uh, Charlene did a, a, a very good job for us. And this is kind of a, a hard, a hard decision, uh, on my part in terms of having discussions with her. And, you know, when you have a discussion with a person that's doing a good job, but you can see their passion and love is something else. So it, it is kind of a, a short-term sacrifice, the way I look at it, but a long-term success for the community to have Charlene go upstairs. With that being said, you know, I've always been of the school of thought that when people do depart, it's an opportunity to look at the way we do things. And, you know, I have not been, uh, successful, the marketplace hasn't been, uh, allowed me to be successful in bringing in someone who's kind of a true number two that would take over for, for the administrator when the administrator departs. And what you see more typically down here is somebody that does personnel. So the other part to this is the, the salary that we currently pay the assistant is, I think, around a hundred and five. Um, and the low end of the scale would be eighty-eight to ninety-two. That I would intentionally try to recruit somebody that would, uh, keep the position of assistant town administrator because quite honestly, it's in the charter and I don't think it's worthwhile to go through all the charter changes to accomplish that. But to make sure that the expectation and the layout of the expectation is that we will focus much more on the HR. HR doesn't compensate the same level as a, a manager would be compensated. So the, the second part of this is we hope to free up some money in which to do that. Uh, we have been very successful, I think, with Ann in the office, that we've, uh, changed the way we do personnel. Probably six months now or almost coming up on a year in which Ann has been responsible for, uh, being the, the, um, director, if you would, of clerical staff on, just on the second floor. And what I'd like to do is expand her and have her be in charge of the clerical staff throughout the building, just town hall. And the idea is that she would manage the secretaries more on a day-to-day basis. This is a model that I've had an interest in doing for quite a, quite a few years. It's a private sector model that I think does apply to the public sector. And what that will do is now that frees up the assistant to be able to interact more with department heads and deal with a higher level of issues. We've, we've done that, um, example with the community development. I think that it has worked pretty well, uh, in its execution. And for that additional responsibilities, that means that Ann, in, in this case, who, which we would upgrade her position to, uh, support staff supervisor. And we do need to come back to you with a job description and the, and the title for that, but that is the concept. The end result of all this is that we hope to have this be revenue neutral. So there would be no additional dollars. It's just reallocating the resources that we have. And if we have the ability to put a little bit more into the, uh, the legal position, we'll, we'll definitely do that. But one of the things that I won't know is until we recruit someone, until we have somebody on board as the assistant with a focus of HR, we won't know how much the, the true savings of that, that effort's going to be.
Larry?
Yeah, I, I have no concerns with the first memo. I do have some concerns with the second, uh, memo. I do have some concerns with the second memo. I, I do agree that with Charlene leaving, I would agree she's been doing a good job. With her leaving, it does open the, give us the opportunity to relook at what we want in that position. I'm uncomfortable with your statement that we'll change the position and leave the job description the same. You know, seems to me we should look at what the job description is and look for the person for that. I would like to see, that's not included in your memo. I'd like to see an organizational chart that re-looks it, so we have, we have an understanding of how the operation works as a whole. I hate to look at this as a fragmented basis and not know how they're related to each other, you know, before we, so we have additional discussion on it. Now, this is a good time for us to look at the Assistant Administrator position. You know, what, if we have an opening, maybe that, maybe we should be looking for our procurement legal analyst. Those can kind of combine together and we could use some more expertise in procurement. And maybe that's a higher-level position that would give us procurement expertise plus legal expertise. Maybe there's a Human Resource part of that. But I would like to see us spend a little more time and look at, once we have the complete organizational chart and it's comfortable as how they're working together, that every department job is well-defined. And then we can look at what, what's the biggest gap that we're trying to fill. And I would, I would think also we have someone, say, throwing out procurement legal. I don't know if that's the right one. I think that also gives us a, hire someone with tools that would allow that person to advance if, if a position comes open, you know. You always should, you know, Chris, given your position, you always should be looking for someone who could take your place, for whatever. And if we had someone who was, you know, I would not try to necessarily look at that as being our place to save money. I would look first at what do we need?
My comments are similar to Larry's, Chris. And my intention was to bring back the Assistant Town Administrator position for full discussion on what we actually want.
Sure, sure.
So, just a couple of questions, just as, I think the information Larry asked for is, is needed. But in your memo, the first memo, the reallocation of existing Administration will require higher responsibility and skill sets. This refers to Community Development?
Yes.
Are we doing additional training? So, you're saying that their skill set's going to change? And is that going to require more training?
I, I think in all honesty, Mr. Chairman, because we've been kind of running short-staffed, we've been asking these people to step up and, and do more work for quite a while. And I think this is a recognition of that.
So, we don't have to? You don't see any schooling or any training?
No.
The, how long has that position been empty?
Since November.
Since, yeah, beginning of December.
This year?
Seventeen.
Okay.
It's only been vacant for a little over a month.
So, the stipend money that we gave Ann to take over the, the responsibility of supervising those people, where'd that money come from?
That was in the budget two years ago.
So, the budget, budget item. We didn't take it from another position?
No.
So, in a past conversation, Chris, you mentioned that Administration can change these positions for the, for the better of the town without going before the union. So, if it's good for the organization, Administration can change it.
We can determine staffing levels.
Okay. And with that, I do remember you telling me that there's a bit of gray area when you are taking some of the responsibilities of that position. If you're not going to fill the position, fine. If you're going to fill it, but you take those responsibilities and give it to somebody else, then we're skirting on, on union ground. Is that, do we have to talk to union if you're going to give those responsibilities to another body in another area and not fill that position?
I mean, we may want, as a courtesy, just let them know what we're doing. I don't know.
But it's not, not more than a courtesy to give the responsibilities?
In fairness, we, we haven't heard back yet from our Labor Council. We did send the memo.
Thank you. Assistant Town Administrator, I was a no vote on the Assistant Town Administrator a couple of years ago when we hired. I didn't think we needed one. I thought we needed other positions. After your uncertainty in whether you were going to stay in Harwich and you were applying for other jobs, and Charlene didn't want to take the Town Administrator's job, I think I saw the importance of having a Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator, that can step into your role if they need to, so that the town doesn't have to go out and find a temporary Town Administrator or be left without a Town Administrator and an Assistant. So, for me, the Assistant Town Administrator role, we as a Board should be doing what I think is the most responsible thing to the town and having somebody in that can fill your shoes if you leave, get ill, whatever. So, I'm going to re-agenda this for conversation on Assistant. As far as the rest of the memo goes, Chris, I mean, I think Ann has done a phenomenal job and certainly worthy of the position that you're requesting. Don?
Can I just ask a question through you, Mr. Chair? Because Larry brings up an interesting point with a flow chart here. The person that's going to be supervising all the support staff is not the selection official? Or the person that they actually work in the office for? Would that be fair to say?
It's, it's.
I mean, that's, I, I agree with Chris. That's fairly common in, in the businesses I've worked with. You have a, you know, an admin, they re, I guess they indirectly report to the, who's running the office, but they, you know, they're, they're part of a different group.
I, I bring that up because, I mean, I went through a doctor's office like a couple of years. Cape Cod Healthcare has that model. They have terrible problems since, you know, some of their units because of that, that the person that they're actually taking orders from doesn't rate them, doesn't actually hire them.
Yeah, just to be, just to be clear on that, this is a, it's an insurance model is the one, an insurance company that does it. Ann coordinates to make sure they get their evaluations done, and she works. The day-to-day direction is still with the onsite supervisor. The onsite supervisor, though, and Ann do any evaluations together. The thing that we're trying to relieve the department heads of is scheduling vacations. If someone is out sick, how do we cover? It's dealing with the, the more minutia where we don't want the department heads to have to get into too much of that detail.
I think the reason that, that's business I've been doing that is to give more flexibility, have someone that can, if there's a particular demand in one department, they can shift personnel to get that happen. The day-to-day supervision's done by the person who's in, you know, running that group.
A lot of everything will go through Ann, that's.
No, I do understand. I have, my cousin worked for IBM for many years, and she, she was one of the supervisory secretaries.
I've, I've, I've seen it go badly and I've seen it go well. You still have to depend on people.
That's kind of why I wanted to at least bring it up and maybe see that as part of the flow chart later.
Chris, we'll go over this.
Yeah, we can, we'll take some more time to do it. I just wanted to present some concepts.
Thank you. Update on the Clean Water Community Partnership. Chris, do you want to do that or you want Larry to do it?
You passed over, you passed over your.
Your own report.
Your own report.
It's not that important.
It's a new business.
Yeah, sorry, new business. Draft annual report of the Board of Selectmen. So, I took the time and wrote what I wanted to write based on staff help and.
I read it, I thought it was good. I had no, no real comments.
You know, you want to add anything to that?
I thought it was great. I think you did a very good job.
Do you want to add anything to the annual report?
No, it's excellent.
Don?
Don't invite criticism. It's not a good idea.
I'm good with criticism. I'm actually good with you writing the report.
No, they had the right author.
So, motion to approve.
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
No, seriously, it was a, it was an upbeat, you know, upbeat report. Sometimes these tend to be a little negative because we, for various reasons. You know, we've done, we've had, we've had a lot of good things happen. We have our challenges, but I think you pointed that out.
I was down at the bottom of the line here. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so golf fees, fees and rates for 2018, this is old business. Welcome back, Clem. Thanks for your patience tonight.
Thank you, Michael.
We have your, we have your report in the packet.
Exactly.
You don't need to go over everything, I guess. I, I think I'm, if you don't mind, I'll just open it up. You've been here once before. We've seen everything except for the public hearing was wrong. So, you re-advertized and you had a public hearing and here you are. Don, any questions?
Nope.
Janelle?
No, thanks, Clem.
Julie? Larry?
I do, I do not.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to re-approve the schedule as presented.
Second.
Who can second it to approve golf fees and rates for 2018 as presented? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Clem.
Thank you very much for the approval. And I'd just like to say that I hope the history, maybe it was a little bit overkill, but it gives you an exact reference as far as where we've been in the last 10 years. And I think we're in a good place going forward because, actually, there are three goals that we'll accomplish, you know, with this fee structure. And basically, it's meeting your revenue goals for the town, which is super-important, meeting our debt obligations going forward as well. And if you looked at that comparison, our rates and fees put us in a very enviable place as far as competition within the golf community here on the Cape, so.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Roman's doing a great job.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
I think Roman knew this meeting was going to be extended tonight, and that's why.
Anytime we bring up the harbor, it's an extra hour.
Nor did we.
Chris, did you get that motion made by Don?
Seconded by Larry.
Yep. Unanimous motion on the.
Was it seconded by Larry?
Sure.
Why not?
Was it me?
I'm just kidding.
Annual report was passed unanimously, no changes. Okay, wastewater project management. Larry?
I brought this up.
Did you vote the fees?
Yeah.
We did, yeah.
Too worried about who seconded it.
Vote.
Very little discussion, Chris.
I brought it up by concern about project management for wastewater is going, project going forward in Pleasant Bay East Harwich. And I think a couple of months, I go and mention it here, and I, and I want to bring it up again because I'd like it to see us take some more concrete action on that. Specifically, my, my concern is, is that this is significant cost to the town. You know, we've, we're nine thou, nine million in. We're looking at 20 million going in, asking for town meeting. I think we need to ensure the town residents that we're putting our full support behind this and, and adding the help where necessary. And I see, Chris right now is trying to take on project management, but he has a lot of things going on. And I've tried to in this memo, and I, any suggestions anyone have, of course, you're welcome, to, to try to designate certain tasks. And specifically, I, I would suggest that we should consider the use of a consultant, not a full-time person, but a consultant to help on the construction details, the project manag, management of that. The second item that I, that is in this document that I'm suggesting we do is look at a consultant to worry about, to help us with communications, PR. I feel strongly that we need a, a focus point in town. Doesn't have to be sitting here in town, but if someone calls the phone, calls up and, you know, has a question, that we have someone that's going to answer that. Not only so that the neighborhoods get the handholding they need to move forward comfortably, but my judgment is, is that we want this to go well for a lot of reasons. It's expensive. It's also one of the initial phases of a 40-year project. I don't want to kill the rest of the project because people, well, let me put it in a more positive way. I would like people to come through this phase feeling good about it. Think we helped them, we, we helped them put it together, their, things were done on schedule. They knew what was going to happen. You know, we have feedback, and where I live at least is that, you know, they, they like to be ensured that there is that contact. Also, they would like the town to take some, or whoever to help them, be sure scheduled appropriately, for instance, that if they start down the street, that's done in sequence, that they're not coming back and forth to minimize that. I think we can do this with a, and I've tried to list some of these. You know, Chris obviously would be the focal point of that, but I think we need help to be sure it's done, done right, and that's my whole pitch. The, the second part of this is, is that we spent some time discussing and some time looking at how we should organize wastewater in Harwich. And we looked at having a Board of Selectmen's responsibility be basically the, the construction of the wastewater, the sewer system or alternatives, however we go. Once that is quote, you know, we have pipes in, in the ground, that would be turned over to the water department. I think it's a mistake to try to use the water department as part of the project management for the construction phase. I think that should remain part of the Board of Selectmen's responsibility. I also don't think that the water department has enough to do to maintain that, what they're doing now, and they can add to that once the construction's in place and it's moved forward. And so, to end that, my point in this discussion, I would hope that we come back and with your comments, decide that we're going to add supporting consultants. So, we go to town meeting and say, you know, we're, we're going to spend a little money, but this is to be sure that the project goes well and we're communicating in a focused and, and direct way to the, to the people involved. And that's the whole purpose of my discussion and the reason I, Michael's reason I wanted to bring it back again.
Thank you, Larry, and thank you for putting the memo for me. Obviously, this is a budget item, and Chris is in the middle of the budget. You know, since we put our budget message out and said that we were going to stick to 2% or try and stick to 2% and no growth, we've recommended three or four new positions. With that said, I, Chris, see in the capital plan, the 20,000 moving forward for, you know, potential wastewater stuff. I also noticed, Larry, that a lot of what we're asking in the memo mirrors what we just put the Support Committee together for.
It is.
So, I imagine this person would work with the Support Committee.
And, and I've shared this with the three people we have now, and we're hoping to add to that for the Support Committee. I forgot, I, to mention one thing. I see the, I identified two different constructions or consultant expertise. One is engineering that CDS, CDM Smith is doing. I see the PR communication as being something, a completely different skill set. Because that, we need someone, maybe not the best engineers in town, but the best at communicating and listening to people and putting that forward.
I have to imagine somebody like this exists, Chris. I don't, I don't know how we, how we flush that out. But, you know, I think this really goes along with the conversation about the Assistant Town Administrator and what their role's going to be, because clearly you're the, you're the wastewater person at this point. You're the project manager, and a $220 million project, granted, I think it's only 75 million or so over the next five years, is a lot to ask for, for you to run the town with a lessened position on the Town, Assistant Town Administrator. And just for clarification, we did vote, the construction phase belongs to the Board of Selectmen. So, that's done. Water Department doesn't get it until we start running water. Puchatam.
Right.
Dirty water. So, it's a budget concern. For me, it's a budget concern.
I think it's a budget concern for me as well, Mr. Chairman. I, I just, I, I get the sentiment, I, I really do. But, you know, I sit here and we have an owner's project manager on the school project, and it's, you know, on the Cape Tech. And I'm trying to remember how much that budget was. I mean, you're talking about a lot of money. And I sit here and I look at the model that Chatham has done. Chatham has relied almost solely on Bob Dunkinson and their DPW director to assist. And here, maybe just a different stylistic, if you would, between how Jill does things in Chatham and how I do things in, in Harwich. I've always taken on an individual project to work on, so it's not unusual for me to, to do that. I do have Dan Pelletier is a member of the team. He's been helping me do it. I was hoping to have him start picking up, doing some of the paperwork. I think, Mr. Chairman, that was a concept that you had, kind of some thought behind. And Bob Cafarelli has some assistance. And it, it really is, I mean, if the town wants to put up, I don't know what the number would be, Larry. That's what I'm kind of struggling, 100, 150,000. And having a support person to act as owner's project manager to give me a resource, you know, it'd be hard pressed to say no, but that's directly contrary to what you guys have told me you want to see.
And, Chris, for me, I said it was a budget issue, and it is a budget issue. And, Chris, for me, I said it was a budget issue and it is a budget issue. I would like to explore and I think what Larry's asking for makes a lot of sense for the community, not at a hundred and fifty thousand. And I, and several elements of this memo, I think that we rely on the committee to do and we rely on staff to do. The PR piece, and to make sure that we dedicate somebody besides yourself to answer the phone calls that Larry's talking about. So I, I think that there's some room, some room here that's not a hundred and fifty thousand dollar position, Larry?
Well, that's my point exactly, I think if we identify the people, we can let the, uh, committee and we can decide how much we need to use them. Maybe it's, maybe we end up not using that much, but I wanna be prepared in saying that we're gonna give the support we need. And, uh, I, let's find those people first and then, and get the support and see where we'll go with it. I wanna push back and not, and not just throw it out, I wanna, I wanna look at these.
Well, I think two things, uh, you know, i- if you wanna look at how Falmouth does it, I mean, there are other towns that are in the sewer business and see how they interact, I, I'm open, I'm open to the idea. But secondly, I think, I had a meeting today and we're having the information meeting next week to criticize and say, and not necessarily criticize, that's not the right word, but to say we don't have the information as we're starting to roll it out, isn't really, you know, I, I think, let's see how next week goes, uh, next Tuesday. And let's see how people feel about the information they have. You've submitted thirty questions through a member of the, that group and we did the, I get the, the, um, frequently asked questions today and they're trying to answer it. If the question is, are we gonna be able to answer fifty questions from an individual resident, I'm not gonna be able to do that.
And I'm not, and that, that's not where I'm going. I wanna be sure that we have a structure in place that we feel comfortable can respond to the community on the expensive project. And I think we can do it for a lot less than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars through volunteers and through some extra help. But I don't, well, I, I can keep speaking of that, I want a structure in place that we feel comfortable with.
Julie?
So, I'm just thinking out loud here, but in terms of, and I, I agree with what you're saying, I think communication and PR and all of that is very important. And again, I, I understand the budget constraints. So, one thing I'm just gonna throw out there, I don't know if this has already been discussed, but what about a Facebook page that is monitored by, you know, maybe one contact person on that committee and CDM Smith, one contact or something? Something like that, that, you know, that stuff we can share gets the word out there, people keep sharing it and so, and then if there's the same question asked, someone can say, see above, like the same, you know what I mean? So there's that, but the other part of this that, and again, to your point about being in front of this and having dealt with Chatham on various issues just for work, is I think I said before, one of the biggest problems is the easements. We need to figure out some way to keep that, that ball rolling, 'cause to your point about going street by street, that's not gonna happen. It would be great if it did, but it, it, you know, it goes to working on this street to get these easements and such. And I, I'm, I'm totally minimizing it, I, I didn't work on their project, but I'm just saying, trying to look at different streets that we were looking about sewer lines, that how long it took and from what I understand, that was one of the biggest hurdles, was getting people to respond to the need to sign different documentation for easements, et cetera, and I, I think that's, that could be a real problem.
Can you put an email together that we can follow the David Young on your concerns? Larry?
I think that's where having some assistance in the office for legal assistance would be, you know, a tremendous asset.
My, my, I think where we should go Larry is let the committee meet the tenth, maybe we can try and trim down this list.
Yeah.
Chris can, um, explore what other towns are doing because I, I a hundred percent see your need, I just don't, I don't see a, I think a hundred and fifty thousand's a way off number anyway, but if we paid a PR person twenty thousand to focus on East Harwich, what can we get?
Especially what the job duties are.
Right, so if we could trim down the job duties to what the committee's doing and kinda work with them and then pick, 'cause I agree with you, we need more, Chris can't be the phone call.
Right.
And that's my point, I, I wanna structure in place that we can comfortably go to town meetings and say, you know, we're, we're looking forward.
No, you're right.
And we're gonna have this back every week from now until town meeting, so. All right, what's next? Update, um, did I, did I skip over anything? Update from CDM Smith, Chris, do you wanna just go through where the meeting is next week?
Yeah, we, we do get, and I, I will start putting this in the package for the, uh, board as they submit the bill, they're giving a, uh, status report as to what they're working on. So they have, uh, internal project quality, uh, session that they've already done, begin evaluation of wastewater flow estimates for the various phases, continued coordination of surveying efforts, they did get the final survey information December twenty-second. Continued evaluation and refinement of the Phase Two limits, that's what we kinda met with, uh, them today. Continued evaluation of the, the flow for the, coming up. They did prepare the, uh, agenda for the meeting, did frequently asked questions, we did, uh, also coordinate with them about doing the, uh, information sheet. They're gonna get the information sheet, so we can kinda gear up, so once that committee is kinda functional, we'll start passing out some of that and get their feedback. And the committee did do a lot last year to, uh, you know, was a major part of the reason why that that was so successful at town meeting. But that, just to give you a flavor of, uh, some of the-
And a lot of that information is next week at the community center on the sixteenth, seven o'clock.
That would be an important meeting for folks, not necessarily for the general public, but for folks that are in the area, so they have a, a sense for timetables. All those questions that relate up to them, we, the presentation won't respond to.
Thank you. You wanna give a quick update on what's going on with Dennis Yarmuth in Harwich?
Oh, you want to, go ahead, Chris.
I was trying to get you there. So on the, uh, so we, we do meet, uh, we do have, uh, meeting minutes that are done. This is more, uh, a working group, so it's, it's not necessarily a, a, um, public, public, uh, institution, if you would. But just in terms of it, we, we are preparing minutes, we will make sure that we put this on the, uh, website. We do cover different topics, I, I think that we are well ahead of Dennis and, and Yarmuth in terms of some of their organization. They're still building their organization to kinda, uh, catch up. One thing that Dennis did that I thought was, uh, kinda fascinating and they will report back is they are looking at, uh, they hired the Collins Group out of, um, they're out of, uh, UMass to do a, uh, kinda study on kind of the, uh, financial impact, will it bring, uh, development to their Route Twenty-Eight? That's, I think, a bigger issue for, uh, Dennis and Yarmuth than it is for Harwich, but I think it'll be at least interesting to see what potential impact that would have. And then they did copy some of the material that we had provided on the, uh, cost recovery plan, sound of Dennis. And they're, they're still working on, I don't think they have theirs, either one has, uh, I think Yarmuth has to do an update of their CWMP plan and get that updated. And Dennis, I think, has one submitted and is waiting for review, so they don't have one finalized yet.
Chris, is our intent to go to town meeting this year with legis- to try and get the legislation passed to let this happen?
Yeah, I think that the intent is that there'll be probably a, a paragraph or two of, uh, seeking to have the towns work collaboratively to put together a regional agreement and then to potentially bring back that regional agreement to the, uh, various towns after, uh, a year's worth of negotiation. So it'll be kind of a, a concept document.
It's very stepwise, you first wanna have town permission, there's a concept to move forward and then you come back with, uh, the specific language.
And Chris, this contract, that, are we on a contract with CDM Smith for this, or are we just paying our share out of the budget?
We're paying our share out of the budget.
And they're billing based on what they're doing for each town?
Yes.
Okay. And there was a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant mentioned, I think?
Yeah, we still haven't heard yet, but do we get that, if we get that, then that will take on the lion's share and the, the cost.
Part of it. Okay. Damon, have any questions on that? All set?
Just the appoint representatives.
A point representative, Chatham, Harwich, MMA, so in the, uh, inter-municipal agreement with Chatham, Chatham has three representatives to this group and we have two. Chatham has Jill Goldsmith, the town manager, and two residents. We took this up before and then, um, we've really not picked anyone yet. So my recommendation would be Chris as Town Administrator since Jill's on there and Larry because he does the rest of the wastewater. Can I get a motion on that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you Larry.
So, Larry seconded that?
Yeah, I'm not stupid.
You know, we can change that if we wanna change that, so if we get, uh-
No, let's go, I, I'll go right now, 'cause I'm involved with everything else.
I asked Angelo Lamonti if he wanted to do it and he said no and a few other people.
Yeah, we'll, we'll let them know that they voted that, thank you.
Thank you Larry. Town administrator's report?
Yeah, just, uh, a couple, I, I already kinda covered it. I did one on the cell tower revenue, I did, uh, get a request, uh, I think Julie had sent this, so as of January fifth, uh, the amount of balance in the account is sixteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars, so I know Art was interested in that, in eleven cents. Uh, we did pay the, uh, two hundred and forty, uh, that was obligated under, uh, the, um, the Habitat people, not Hetch, I was gonna say Hetch.
As well as the-
As well as, I think we've paid the Hetch bills, I don't know if we've paid them in total.
Up to twenty-five.
Up to twenty-five.
Yeah.
So we've, that now is a, an available balance after those obligations have been met. Uh, that was a, a question that was asked.
Did you get that, Art?
I got it.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome. On, uh, the MMA, I don't know if, uh, anyone else, uh, we did win an award for innovation, so there's a pet burial ground. I, the pet burial ground, whatever that is called, I know.
There's a movie.
I bet that's more-
It's a more official name than that.
I'll bet you that's wrong though.
But, um, I, I think it's a Friday night dinner? Geez, I hope it's a Friday night dinner.
Yeah, it is Friday.
But I, I don't know if, uh, just trying to get a head count, I know Rob and Kelly's going, I was gonna go. Is anyone else planning on going to that?
I haven't reserved, but I think I will.
Okay.
You going to MMA, Julie?
Yeah, I, I'm going.
Okay, so Julie and-
Well, this is the MMA for Friday.
Yeah, this is a-
Yeah, it's their, uh, their, their awards thing at, in the evening. Geez, I hope it's Friday evening, I'll be in trouble if it's-
Just check with the board members.
I suppose I'll, I suppose I'll go.
And then, uh, to that end too, I, I, I was, uh, asked by some of the folks at MIA, I had served previously on their Board of Directors. I was asked to return to their Board of Directors, I was on their health board, uh, they've asked me to go on as property and casualty. So I said that I would accept the nomination if nominated, so I, I will be nominated at the, the MIA meeting.
Saturday, six P.M.
Saturday?
Is it Saturday at six?
But I will be there.
Julie's not going.
I'm not going on that, not Saturday, no.
Yeah. I had to change my plans. Leave later. Anyway, um, and yeah, so it, that was the, um, those are the things that I had, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So just to finish your head count, Don, you are going?
Uh, I'll go. On the Friday.
So you're going too?
Yeah.
I reserve the second.
Fuckman's report. Don?
I'm good.
Julie? Larry?
Nothing.
I have nothing, motion to adjourn?
Some of-
Second.